Good evening and welcome to the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
I'm here.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent.
Thank you very much, and if you are able, will you please stand? And Madam Vice President, would you lead us again in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and next we will move to item 1.3, Community and School Reflections. Do we have any community and school reflections? Member Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, got a lot, but I'll make it brief. First thing I want to say is congratulations to the scholars at I Promise for their College and Career Academy Changemaker Challenge. They proposed a pilot program, COPS on the Court. And this program is because they want to know how many of you, or many of the students, feel safe around deputies or police officers outside of the school? And also, they want to know, how do you build a better, stronger relationship with law enforcement? So for these nine eighth graders to see this as an issue, I commend them for making change. They won $1,000, so look for it next school year, of them having a big old basketball game with law enforcement and students. So I was very proud of that. Also, on the 16th, Art and Business, located here, there were nine students that were selected to showcase their art, hosted by Don Wilson. The kids sold their artwork for, I think it was $145. $50 went to the students, and the other went to the company that had to frame the art, and then whoever purchased it received it. And that company, shout out goes to Darlene at Akrona for supporting our young people and their art. Also, I went to Prom Promise at Firestone High School. After that event, of watching that, I didn't want to get in my car and drive. That's how freaked out I was about it. So I hope that it really gave a message to our young kids not to drink and drive, put your cell phones down, because you can take a life in matters of a minute. And also, wear your seatbelts. Last thing, summer youth employment, they're still looking for more kids, 16 to 18 years old, jobs starting June 10th. These kids can make up to $2,400 in eight weeks. That's a decent amount for young people, I think. I know back when I was young, we were making, what, $450 an hour? So this is really exciting. Also, if organizations, corporations, or small businesses, if you can take a young person, please reach out to JOGS and let them know that, hey, my company can take a young person to work. The money is coming from the county, so the money's not coming out of your pocket as a business owner, and you're giving kids exposure and an opportunity. Okay? So thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other community and school reflections? Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, and I will also try to be quick. The theme of my community reflections this week is the students. I spent two days this weekend in Pennsylvania for a tri-state soccer tournament. It said tri-state, but I saw at least four different states there. But we had students from our high school team at North, that was our championship soccer team, but there was actually K-12 students from the whole district that were participating in this club soccer tournament. Students from Higher, STEM, Jennings, Hatton, Resnick, Portage Path, but also Akron, living students who are currently going to Norton, Talmage, St. V, other schools, and it made me think of some of the conversations we've had lately about, you know, students coming up together in sports and working together as a team and being members of a team. And what I saw this weekend was not just a team and a community, but students that are family. Really, the, so it's two days, up to Erie, back, up to Erie, back. And the magic really was between the games. They were there all day, and when the younger teams were playing, the older teams were coaching, the high school students were coaching the younger students and helping them practice and hang out, and just, it was really wonderful. And it brings our schools together, different schools, there were at least seven different languages there. There was one eight-year-old from Schumacher, he could speak four languages. I actually had to look up one of them, because I'd never heard of it. So I was learning to, from these just amazing kids that are thriving, being kids, doing exactly what we want our students, our scholars, to do, and the older kids being leaders too. And so, transitioning from that, I also was at the Akron Early College Graduation. More of our kids from around the district coming together, doing exactly what we want our students to do and thrive. There were 92 graduates, and there were students, basically, of the 92, mixed from all the clusters, Bookdell East, Firestone, Ellett, a little bit more from Garfield, and then 24% from North. The largest amount of students were from North, and that was 24%, so students from across the district. Of the 92 graduates, 65 honors diplomas, 32 Presidential Awards of Excellence, 68 associate's degrees, almost three-fourths of the class got associate's degrees, over a million dollars in scholarships so far, 22 National Honor Society stoles, but also, a lot of students were wearing their cultural stoles. They had 28 valedictorians, so they had senior speakers, but one of the seniors gave her bilingual speech, and I'm just so proud of the students, their accomplishments, their confidence, their integrity, their fortitude. And I have to also mention, this week, I got 72 emails from students about today's meeting, concerned about the class size, concerned about the yonder bags, concerned about the budget. So our students care, our students are in fault, and I'm proud of our students. I had questions, but I don't have time.
Thank you, Dr. Molinar. Are there any other community and school reflections? Vice President Jackson.
Almost.
All right, thank you. Since the last time that we had the opportunity to meet, I was able to go to the Teacher of the Year banquet, which is a wonderful experience, because teachers, the students are the lifeblood of any educational institution, especially public schooling. So it's great when you can see teachers being highlighted. And I want to say the most spectacular part of the night is the Golden Apple Award, because the Golden Apple Awards are awards that are given to teachers from their students, and the students do a write-up about the teacher and how excellent the teachers are, and some of the things that the students said about the teachers, it really resonated with me. And this is why when I say, and I mean when I say, that excellence looks different, because teachers truly impact eternity, and because they touch every area of every life and every career, it starts with a teacher. And when students reflect and speak on that, and they're able to highlight their teachers in such a way, I think that's such a great reward. I was very excited to see one of my teachers from the Bookdell cluster, and that's what I mean when I say my teachers, because it's my cluster this year, Virginie Whitmore was highlighted. I really like what Ms. Whitmore does, because as you know, I'm very involved with entrepreneurial studies and students engaging in that matter. And I know she plays a big role over there at Bookdell High School with the Bookdell store, and also engaging the students in opportunities. So I want to give a shout out to 1040 and Ms. Whitmore for her efforts and being recognized by her student. Also, this Teacher of the Year is a young teacher, 26-years-old, I believe, and she is at Garfield High School, Garfield CLC, my alma mater. And it was just a wonderful thing to see, a young person coming in, being innovative, and recognized by her peers of all ages for the great things that she's doing in the classroom. And what was really exciting about this young lady is because she gave credit about those around her, which, to me, speaks to the importance of having strong mentorships when you come into teaching, to help support you on that journey. So again, shout out to that. Also, I told Pat Shive I was going to steal her white coat thing, and talked about the importance of teachers and how doctors have white coat ceremonies, because it's a respect, a distinction for the profession to set them apart from just random people that are practicing or practitioners. It says something, the white coat ceremony. And I'm in agreement with that, because excellence does look different. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to Glover CLC. I talked to Mike Hardness, and he spoke about 100% growth with the fourth and fifth grade reaching or exceeding their goal in reading and math at Glover CLC. So I think that's something we can be excited about, and we can give them a hand clap. Is that all right? Because we want to celebrate great teachers doing great things. And so, as some of you may know or may not know, my first cluster was the Garfield cluster, so I visited the whole cluster my first year. And when I went to Glover, I was so impressed, and I told Mr. Hardness, I said, this is, I know good teaching, and this is excellent teaching. It was a co-teaching model, and he did a phenomenal job. So shout out to him, Julie Paulus and Anna Ryrick for the great work.
Thank you. Any other community and school reflections?
Okay, well, I will go ahead with mine. Since we last met, I had the awesome opportunity to be a part of the STEM High School graduation. Congratulations to that class of 2024 over there. There were 71 scholars who really appreciated what APS offered them, and they worked hard to reach that goal. And so, Coach Popa and her team over there should be commended for guiding those students through. Once again, teachers at the core. Also, I was able to attend the Akron Urban League Scholar Academy Luncheon last week, where 12 of our scholars were awarded scholarships. And what I appreciated about that is as each one of our scholars was presented with their scholarship, you know, normally, they say, well, they're going into this field or that field. They say that, no, they're going to be an architect, they're going to be an entrepreneur, they're going to be an educator. So I appreciated them just speaking life into our students, and it was just an honor to be there and support our scholars. Also, last week, I was able to attend Love for Literacy over at Bookdell CLC. They have an amazing, another amazing teacher over there, Ms. Turek. And she wrote a grant and received it through one of our partners, G A R, for a literacy program. And each scholar was able to receive a book of their choosing, and they committed and dedicated to reading 20 minutes at each class period, followed by some journaling, and then some artwork. And so, last week was a presentation of their artwork that was related to the novels that they read, and it was amazing to see all of that. And the other amazing part of that is the collaboration with our Culinary Arts Program, who provided wonderful sliders and cookies and snacks. And so, also, we had one of our retired art teachers, Ms. Hogarth, who was there, who assisted through this whole entire project. And so, just a special shout out to that whole team who collaborated. And I have to mention that there were so many students who just love Mrs. Turek over there, and who would appreciate reading now. And so, thank you, Mrs. Turek, Ms. Henderson, and G A R for supporting that. And then, lastly, I just want to also acknowledge the many emails, not only from the adults, but from the students, because I know when students write, it's from the heart, and it means something. And so, I just want to say, although I have not answered the over 100 emails I've received so far, I just want to say right here today out loud that I have received them. I'm continuing to read them, I will respond to them, and I just want to thank them for their engagement. And so, that concludes my community and school reflection. Next on our agenda is item 2.1, where we will have recognition of Garfield CLC by Mr. Alexander.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we had more noise than when we first came in than we have now. All right, this evening, we wanted to recognize Garfield CLC. Ohio School Board Association, each year, they have their spring and their fall conferences, and they're broke down into regions, and we are in the Northeast Region here, in Akron. And as the president of the Northeast Region, you're allowed to have one of the fall conferences or the spring conference in your district. And so, we chose to have it here in Akron, one of them in Akron, and the other one in Warren. And the one in Akron was at Garfield. And we wanted this to be student-centered, and so what we did is we put together a question, say we, but the staff and Mr. Reno from the Ohio School Board Association, all of us got together, and we came up with this program. And the program, again, was student-centered. We had, there were about 100 school board members from across the Northeast Region who came to Garfield CLC. And as they were coming into the building, they were greeted by the ambassadors, student ambassadors, and student ambassadors brought them into the school, gave them a tour, if they wanted to, of the culinary, of the different college and career academies that they had there, and they got a chance to see that, and then they got a chance to sit down. There was a dinner as well that was served that night, and before we started the dinner, we started the presentation, there was a young lady, and what is your name? Tell me.
Aiden Mercado.
Say it again.
Aiden Mercado.
Aiden Mercado. And Aiden did the National Anthem for us. She sang the National Anthem for us, did a very good job. We also had the Junior ROTC present the colors. They did a very good job. We had the culinary, they prepared the food. And I had some feedback from a lot of the school board members across the Northeast Region and said they were glad they came to Garfield, because we could have went to some restaurant and got food that wasn't as good as they got there. And so, that was really nice, the students were able to do that. So in doing that, I want to thank Mr. Morrison, first of all, who's the principal there at Garfield CLC. Like to thank Mr. Cuddiff, who is the assistant principal, and Mrs. Morales. Where's Mrs. Morales? She is the culinary teacher who worked closely with the students, who prepared the food. It was a very good night, we got a very good response, and we wanted to bring some positive energy to Akron Public Schools, and these students did a very good job of bringing some positive energy to our school. So can we give them a hand? And with that, they were presented by Ohio School Board Association, a plaque. And the plaque reads, Northeast Region Ohio School Board Association, Northeast Region Spring Conference, Thank You Garfield CLC Culinary Arts and Pathways 2024. And this is a plaque that they received. So again, can we give them another round of applause for their job? Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Again, thank you all for doing such a good job of representing Akron Public Schools.
And as they take their seats, I just also want to say, congratulations again, but I also want to give a shout out that this culinary program also supported and prepared the meal for Project Rise when they had their family feast during the Thanksgiving holiday. So, Ms. Morales and team that works to support our community in that way, I want to just say kudos to them, so that you all know. And if you don't know in the audience, Project Rise serves our homeless or transient population within our schools, and it was a wonderful program hosted at Garfield CLC as well.
Thank you, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is item 3.1, Request to Address the Board. And so, it's obvious that we do have a packed house this evening. Congratulations for just being engaged with us. With that being said, we do have only so much time. And at this time, we actually have 18 requests to address the board. And so, I just wanted to put that out there, because our policy is that we can hear from seven people unless there is a motion from a board. So I just wanted to share at this time that there's currently 18. Madam Vice President.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the timing to allow for additional people to address the board if necessary. Oh, so we originally give them 10 minutes, so I'd say if we add 20 minutes, so for like a total of 30 minutes?
So their motion is to extend to a total of... 30 minutes? Is that what you're asking?
What's the total of the board? I think it's 40. Okay, so double it.
Well, it's 18 times 3. We got to do some math. What's 18?
For 15 minutes.
The motion on the floor is to extend the time...
By 15 minutes.
By 15 minutes, which would be a total of 40, 35 minutes. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Dr. Molinar. Is there any discussion?
So, here's what I think. I think if we have 18 people who want to speak, we should allow all 18 to speak. And if we do that... I did quick math here, and it comes out to 54 minutes for three minutes apiece. So I'd say 54 minutes total.
So the motion on the floor is for an additional 15 minutes. So I think it would take a second to amend that motion.
Well, I moved the minute to 54 minutes total.
Is there a second to amend the motion?
She can, yeah, you can, you can.
Can I second a second motion? Second.
And so, is there any further discussion?
Madam Vice President.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were going to address the president. Just that, if someone, to be mindful of time, if someone is speaking of your same topic, then maybe you can alleviate that time, because it could allow for others to express all concerns within that time.
So the motion on the floor is to allow all 18 requests to address this board. If there are no further discussion, we will take roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molinar.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Absolutely, yes.
And Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you. And so, as Vice President Jackson just mentioned, in order to accommodate all 18, if you can adjust your comments, if someone already is repeating what you're saying, that will allow us to hear from everyone. So we will start, as you approach, I will read the little blurb that we have to read every time. The first person is Marie Cotrell. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Please state your name and group affiliation. You may proceed, Ms. Cotrell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marie Cotrell, and I am currently a teacher at North High School. Before I introduce the real voices of the parties affected, I want to address the turmoil that this has caused. My focus tonight is on the students, who are far more important than anyone else here tonight. The recent distribution of emails at the end of the day, seemingly last-minute decisions, has caused significant distress. I choose to believe that was a mistake. However, it is troubling that the district appears more concerned with sending out these abrupt emails than engaging in meaningful conversations with its employees about the issues in our district. This year in particular has been frustrating due to lack of effective communication. Despite these challenges, we must remember why we are here, to support and listen to our students. Their well-being and education should be our primary concern. We need to ensure that our schools remain welcoming and where students can thrive, and this includes keeping highly qualified teachers, as well as secretaries, who are essential to their academic success. With that being said, I urge you to take the time to listen to the concerns of our students, their testimonies today, but reflect the real impact of these decisions on their lives and education. It is my honor to present some of our North readers, that will be Simon Chase and Dev, along with our large faculty and student population that is representing us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Chase Belmont. Chase Belmont.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Chase Belmont, a 10th-grade honors and avid student at North High School. I'm here to express our concerns about the layoffs of some of our beloved teachers. I urge the board to provide further clarification regarding why these teachers are being let go. We are worried about losing highly respected and valued educators who have made a significant impact on our school community. One such teacher is Mr. Dalwell, a ninth-grade world history teacher alongside teaching 10th-grade avid. Mr. Dalwell has formed lasting bonds with his students and has provided invaluable life advice that I use daily. Losing, oh, sorry. He treats students with the, he treats us with the utmost respect and is a favorite among students. Losing him will deeply affect those who look up to him as a role model. During my two years as his student, his encouragement has motivated me to take school more seriously and has offered unwavering support. As supporters, as students, we deserve a thorough explanation before losing these invaluable role models. I request that my speech be taken into consideration after this meeting. Thank you.
The next person is Simon Kung-Vik Thong.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Simon Kung-Vik Thong. As a student of North High School, I've come to address our issue with the district's solution concerning its debt. The decision to lay off teachers based on the tenure and not the constitution of their character or involvement is impractical and causes more harm than good. This approach is a temporary solution that harms the student body and staff. Personally speaking, at North High School, teachers have put an effort to connect with their students despite the challenging environment. A common problem within the Akron area is a student's home life situation, something that teachers have helped mediate through their guidance. These connections allow students to be mentored for academic and personal material. Severing that bond, however, would only hinder student learning while serving as a Band-Aid on the wound that is the district's debt. I urge that alternative solutions that won't harm the student body or teaching staff be considered, because releasing teachers is a drastic countermeasure to the district's debt. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Next, we have Dev Bujel. Dev Bujel.
Hello, my name is Dev Bujel. I'm a junior at North High School. It has come to my attention that there will be a rift occurring at our campus. It is very upsetting to hear the news of losing teachers and staff, teachers and staff who are crucial for our education to thrive forward. Losing these great people is not just a loss of workers, but it's a loss of valuable expertise, guidance, and support. Their absences will be felt in hallways, classrooms, and offices alike. From my personal experience, I must say that there has been no other secretary as kind and understanding as the HHS secretary at our school. In addition to that, at the beginning of the school year, we had no proper teaching in our chemistry class. But when we finally received a teacher, he was able to teach us so much in such little time. They all truly hold a compassion for what they do. Please don't take that away from them, and please don't take them away from us. It is our hope that enrollment increases enough so that we can continue to learn from them. Thank you very much for your attention.
Next, we will have Anne Marandino.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Anne Marandino, and I am an educator at Barber CLC. I have worked for Akron Public Schools for 35 years. I would first like to say that at past board meetings, this room and these hallways have been overflowing with community members, students, parents, corporate partners, and interested parties on any number of given topics. People have spoken loudly and passionately, questioning... questioning any number of matters from the rebuilding of schools, questionable contracts, the focus on specific buildings, I could go on. The board has said they welcome the input, that they encourage participation. Never has there been a problem with filling this room, never. That is until AEA members question things, until we enact our right to free speech. Then, and only then, is police presence dramatically increased, both uniformed and plainclothes officers. Only then is the fire marshal called in to limit the amount of educators in this room. We are herded out of sight and out of mind to the second floor of this building. We are being told that the board fears for their safety from their own employees, the educators in this district. We are told not to approach and to keep your distance because we don't want anyone to get hurt. It's a horrible picture to be painting. I want to assure you that I am no threat to you here tonight, but I suspect you already know that. How offensive to try to paint the picture that we would harm you. That being said, I assure you that you are safe. When I am finished speaking, I will walk slowly back to my seat and not make any sudden moves. I wish to speak directly to the public, those here tonight and those watching the live stream of this meeting. I will keep my remarks short. I have a few questions that the Akron community should be asking themselves. If the superintendent is eliminating union jobs here at this building and reclassifying those jobs as administrative jobs paying six figures, where is that money coming from? What program, services to students, professional development, classroom resources are being replaced by salaries to more and more administrators? I respectfully ask the board to be transparent and accountable to the public when spending their tax dollars on more administrators. Thank you.
Next we have Sue Laurie. Sue Laurie.
Good evening. My name is Sue Lockery, and I have worked for Akron Public Schools for twenty-four years. I am currently an educator with the Early Learning Program. I too would like to assure the board that I'm of no threat to you. I want to assure the superintendent that I am not a devil. I'm just an old lady who loves my job, my children, and my families. I am a dedicated Akron Public School teacher. I am a professional educator. I have a right to speak out and question anything that I believe impacts our community, my students, and my families. I not only have the right, I have the responsibility to do so, even if the administration does not believe that I should have that right to speak. I will also like to speak directly to our community members. Ask yourselves, where are the funds coming from to pay more and more administrators to do educators' jobs? Dig deep. The math just doesn't add up. The superintendent has continued to add more and more and more administrative jobs, some that were approved by the board without even knowing what the cost would be. The Akron community deserves honest and transparent answers. We all deserve answers instead of being informed at the last minute without time to question. If it walks like a duck, acts like a duck, and looks like a duck, it's a duck. We all need to demand the transparency that this superintendent and the board claim to provide. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Next we will have Mike Harkness.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Harkness, and I've worked for Akron Public Schools for thirteen years. I'm an intervention specialist at Glover CLC. I want to assure the board that I'll keep my hands clearly in sight, and I am no threat to them. In all my years of attending and working at Akron Public Schools, I have never seen so many uniformed police officers, plainclothes detectives, and fire marshals in one building, ever. But it is our belief that the superintendent's actions are being rushed through in the most non-transparent manner in an effort to bust the union. It is our belief that the superintendent has led a methodical and aggressive campaign to silence any voices who dare question his decisions. It is our belief that the superintendent has directed his administration to target AEA members and discipline whenever possible. This includes our building representatives and our AEA Board of Trustee members. Those are volunteers, by the way. We believe that this superintendent and his administration has continued to suppress information by either not answering our public records requests or aggressively delaying such requests for as long as possible without explanation. We believe that this superintendent has ignored and buried clear and irrefutable evidence of serious administrative misconduct and then accused the union members of orchestrating charges. We believe that this administration continues to suppress educator voices through threats of termination, retaliation, board policy, and attempts to eliminate union jobs. Dr. Robinson, we are not devils. We are professional educators. Board members, we are not a threat to you or your safety. We are professional educators.
Mr. Harkness. Please refrain from mentioning specific employees.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that we all can have a civil conversation without referring to a person by their name. We don't expect this employee to do that to any of you, and please don't do that to him.
We would like that as well. Absolutely.
Thank you, Member Sykes.
Thank you. So again, to the Akron community, please ask the questions prohibited here tonight. There are many things deeply troubling and concerning when information is withheld and then rushed through at the last minute. You should be concerned, concerned for our students, concerned for our families who deserve honest answers, and concerned for Akron Public Schools. Thank you to all of the students, parents, community members who have overwhelmingly reached out to us for support of not only our educators, but also many of our volunteers. Thank you.
Next we will have Nicole Walje. Nicole Walje. Last call for Nicole Walje. Okay, we will move on to Willa Dalball.
Hello, I'm Willa Dalball, and I am a sophomore student at Ellet. I have a request. I would like you to reconsider your choice to get rid of teachers with low seniority. The people being cut have homes to pay for, people to feed, and families to support, not to mention what these teachers do for their school community. Ms. Couch runs Ellet's major not minor club to help uplift students of color. Mr. Sally is the football coach at Ellet, and Ms. Alball is our softball coach.
I'm sorry, but please refrain from naming specific names, please.
Okay. And the avid teacher at Ellet you have heard from, his students have been very tremendously helped by him. There's going to be a huge ripple effect in the schools' communities in regards to these cuts. I would like the board to please consider other options to cutting these teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Caitlin Cookta.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Cookta. I am the senior English teacher at Bookdol CLC. I left my job at Streetsboro Middle School because I wanted to work at Bookdol. I could have stayed in Streetsboro. I was there for seven years, but I put in my resignation, sold my house, and moved to Akron because I wanted to work for Bookdol. I read the mission statement for that school and knew that's where I belong. I was hired last summer. During my first year, I was rated accomplished, was voted by my students of NHS as an honorary inductee, helped create a critical thinking model for the school, was invited to serve on the PBIS committee, and wrote a grant for an after-school cultural immersion program for the next school year. I've been welcomed into the Bookdol community with open arms. I love it here. It's my home. It's an honor to serve alongside staff who genuinely care about what's best for our students, who go above and beyond. Throughout my eleven years as an educator, I've worked in other districts. This is the only district where I've never had a face-to-face conversation with the superintendent. He doesn't know my name. He doesn't know what I've done. At this point, I'm just a hire date. And because of that, my job is on the line. I would love for someone to take the time to speak to my students and their parents, to hear how much I have helped these scholars prepare for college and the real world, to listen to their stories about how I've pushed them in ways they've never experienced. I chose to be here. I chose to be a part of the Bookdol family, to see the best in our students when others have written them off, to work collaboratively with my colleagues and administrators to create new successes in the school and district. These cuts, though, will do nothing to contribute to that success. It will be failing. We, the teachers, are the ones who work hand-in-hand with our scholars. We're the ones cheering them on through their frustrations, wiping their tears, celebrating their successes. Before you cut me, a random hire date, I urge you to take a look at all I've accomplished. And the best way to do that is to have a conversation with the students who these decisions will most greatly affect. They're not just numbers that will fit into your algorithm. They're unique and skeptical, reliant on safe and trustworthy relationships. I've built many strong relationships with them, and in a district with such a high turnover rate, where students have asked me over and over again, will you please stay here next year? I want my answer to be a resounding yes. If it's not, they will know it was not I who left them, but you who forced me out.
Next we're gonna have Brittany Lebo, and I'm just gonna please remind us to be mindful of not mentioning specific names or titles. Brittany Lebo.
Hi. I'm aware that most of the addresses you're getting today are from educators and students. I'm here today as a parent of a student at Akron Public Schools. Wow, I'm a sympathy crier, guys. I'm so sorry. I'm a parent, I'm a community member. I volunteer with our school. I wanted to share with you all the positive experience that my son has experienced at Mason CLC in comparison to the experience we had at a private school. At the private school, there was no auxiliary staff. There was no behavioral support. He missed out on lessons because they couldn't keep him in the room. He was dismissed from his program. This past year, we moved him to Mason, where he's thrived in no short effort because of the auxiliary staff available there. His climate coach has made a huge difference in his ability to stay in the classroom, for him to succeed, for him to learn. He struggled so hard to be kind with his body and to understand critical parts of education, and he didn't get those resources until he came to Akron. When I found out you guys were considering removing so many positions, I had to speak up on behalf of the families whose students have been transformed by the auxiliary staff that they don't have other places. I know that these students benefit from the services and also from the relationships with these staff members. My child's need for support's not going to disappear as he ages out of elementary school and moves on to the middle school and the high schools. The decisions today and this week to remove these roles won't only impact your staff members, as we've heard today. It won't only impact the budget you guys are considering. It's gonna impact student outcomes and parent confidence in keeping their kids in Akron Public Schools. We found a home here. I don't want to have to choose somewhere else. So please consider children like my own who rely on this infrastructure and rely on the support of these staff members when casting your votes. Thank you.
I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounced this, but next is Jasmeen Wadood.
Good afternoon. My name is Jasmeen Wadood. Thank you, guys, for having me. I got the clock this time. So I'm gonna read and try to keep it within the time that I have. For everything that we're presenting to you, that everyone's been presenting to you guys today, you guys have a model that you go by. Clearly, there is a part of this model that is failing, or some of the staff has mastered the loopholes they have found in the model that is allowing them, and it seems the administration, to receive new discoveries and new information, enforcing those discoveries and new information to fit into a pre-existing model that does not properly address those new discoveries, instead of allowing the new information to lead to the real story that it tells. This is not transparency to the public. There is a process, but when that process itself has been corrupted, how is it that we are forced to continue to follow that model? Is it an attempt to stifle and violate those that are trying to correct some of the real issues at hand? Issues that have allowed false truancy charges on innocent children and families? Issues that have allowed deceptive and maybe even fraudulent practices in just about every contract that seems to be held? Issues that allow teaching standards to be lowered, though we already have a failing school system, and we're losing more teachers, apparently? Issues that allow other entities to be all up into our schools with operations unknown to the rest of the families and the public that send their students there? If your administration isn't prepared to start immediately working with all of us and as servants to the community to take further action, then we're gonna have to make sure that we are working with the right people to handle things the right way. Those professionals that are passing the torch to the next generation have this habit of neglecting these serious concerns, forcing the issues onto the next generation to handle because they would have to change all the notations and the contraindicated policies because it would make them look wrong and it would have to actually align with the facts. But we lose the power of those models that we're supposed to follow, that are in place to protect against these very issues that we are facing. If we are a product of intentional acts, it makes sense that the who or the what that is responsible should be suffering these consequences, not the rest of us. I'm just gonna leave it right there for my reading. And just want to say how proud I am of my North students. I'm an alumnus. I see my teacher here, Mr. Brown. So I'm gonna try not to get too emotional, and I'm gonna leave it there.
Thank you. Next is Brandy Vickers.
So I was an APS student. I'm a parent of three APS graduates, with one being, the last one being last year. I've been a Mason's Girls basketball coach, an eye care manor, a van driver for the last seventeen years, and I thought I was spokesperson for the last eight. I have supported APS in many capacities for many years, and I've came to see that the main issue with APS is lack of transparency and communication. As a taxpayer and part of the community, I would urge the board to reconsider the rules that apply to public participation. When we voted for the members of the school board, we were under the premise that it was to represent the community, but how can you guys effectively represent the community if you suppress our voices? If the board's primary responsibilities are to determine the needs and priorities of the school, allocate the resources within the system, and to evaluate the overall performance of the school, how do you effectively do that without actually hearing the concerns of the community? You can't say specific things without being in violation of the rules. And while I understand not talking about a student or a teacher to protect their privacy, that's one thing, but what do you guys find wrong in speaking as subjects that specifically have the opportunity to present long-term problems for APS? Things such as con- Things such as contributing to financial issues or pertaining to the safety and well-being of the students and staff? I believe that if you guys want the community to vote for your levy, support you, you guys have to support us. And in order to do that, you need to be accountable for the mistakes that have been made. You need to consistently follow through with the plans, and you guys have to take the voices of us serious, whether it's a contractor, a vendor, an employee. It's all part of one structured system. And without all of us working together on the same page, we cannot do this. We want APS to succeed, but most importantly, I think everybody in this room wants these children to succeed. They are our futures. They are the future superintendents and board members. But how do they become those if you guys aren't willing to hear everything the community has to say? Even if it's things that you don't necessarily want to hear, you may need to hear it because that's the only way that you are gonna help us out, and that's the only way that we can help you out. Thank you.
And next, we have Robert Lyons. Robert Lyons.
Hi. I'm Robert Lyons. I'm a van driver for 10 years. I'm gonna be brief because I've said all I could need to say, and everyone's pretty much aware of what we do. I implore you to have empathy, stop and think about everything that's being processed, teachers, kids. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Next, we have, is it Mark?
Marquita.
Marquita Carter. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm just a concerned citizen. Been in the Akron area 56 years. I'll be 57 next month. I went to Rankin School. I walked to school, which was a joy. Best years of my life going to school was being able to walk and be a part of my community. And my community, you know, they watched over me as I walked to school. So when I graduated from Rankin School, they closed down west, that's something. My aunts and my uncles went to, and older kids, and they all went to west, and we were following in their footsteps. But I know that had anything to do with you guys. It was previous administrations. But when Akron closed down west, that's when the decline of Akron Public School system started to fail, the students in that area. They turned it into a low-income housing, and they said that it wasn't inhabitable, but Akron Public Schools sold it to AMHA, and that's who lives there now. They let Rankin School, they allowed Rankin School to sit there in the decapitated face that it has now. It looks so homeless. It looks so horrible in that area. And last week, when I was at the meeting, I heard someone say on the board that there wasn't enough students in the areas. I disagree. Have you re, if you take back Akron, I mean Rankin School, and build a junior high school there, because you did take, because Perkins is gone, but if you build a junior high school right there, then you would have some students to fill that, to fill that school. There's also an issue with busing children from the inner cities to the outside schools when we can have our children walk into school in our own neighborhood. It would also save money from busing because of the inflation of today's society. If you reconstruct and redirect, you need to put back what was taken years ago. If you put it back like it was, you would have a whole wonderful group of young adults today. Akron government created a hostile environment. So when these kids come outside their door, all they see is guns and drugs. There's no stores. There's no schools. There's no community centers. There's nothing. So what we have today is a result of what was done yesterday. So if you take that $24 million and reinvest it or stack on it and rebuild some schools in the inner cities on each side of town and leave our students and our inner-city children right there in their own neighborhood, you will see a better attitude from our kids. Thank you.
Next, we have Toni Lewis.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tati Lewis. I'm gonna keep it short because when I came here on the, February, what was it, on the 13th, and I had made a speech, after I got done with my speech, I know it was good because I was the only one, when I went outside, my car didn't start. So I said, "Okay, okay." I shook something up here. So, but I would like to, I would like to take the time and thank my contractor, van driver. He was just up here. And because he turned, when I turned, when I called him and told him that my car stopped, he turned around, came back and gave me a jump. That's what I'm talking about. I don't know the other companies, but I do know the van drivers, the contractor van drivers. They love their students. I said everything that I had to say last week about, you know, the race and everything, and I stand by everything. I just want everybody, when they go home, listen to Michael Jackson, the man in the Everybody need to look at their self. You out the Bible. What you gonna do? Everybody have a name. Everybody have a title. Everybody need to stand on something. The way I was raised, if you don't stand for something, you fall for everything. Thank you to my mother for that. She was a good mother. Whatever we have to do, I feel like if we come together as one, work together, you give me some bread, I give you some milk. You give me, you give me some candy, I give you some pop. Well, no, not pop. I'm a Popaholic, so you probably won't get none of my pop. But what I'm saying, if we come together, we can make a change. We are the change. It starts with us. So what are we gonna do? We have to grab the kids' hands, the teachers' hands, and I'm really proud. I have a special needs child to go to Bookdale, 1040. But I was a Garfield, I'm a Ram, baby. I'm a Ram. And I'm so proud. I seen the culinary children come out, and it made me so proud because when I went to Garfield, I was in the restaurant management program, and I'm so, I wish I had the culinary arts school. I wish I had that. But I'm just so proud of them, and I'm just so, I feel like we can be the change. We just have to work together. Let's be a team. Teamwork make the dream work. What we gonna do? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that actually concludes our public comment at this time. So thank you for the teamwork and working together, condensing your times. We appreciate that input, and we're gonna move on now to our presentation of the five-year forecast. Dr. Thompson. Very imperative to what we've been addressing. So although it might seem a little dry, this is the stuff that, the details of why decisions are made.
Well, let me just start off by saying thank you for being here. Thank you for being engaged and listening. What I'm gonna attempt to do tonight is to give you a general understanding of where we stand financially, how it impacts the five-year forecast, and just what a difficult situation it's to be in, in terms of leadership making decisions. Nothing a school administrator does do they loathe more than this. This is the worst part of our job, and we fully understand and know that these are lives we're talking about. These are people's income. This is people's ability to, as one person mentioned, to pay the mortgage, et cetera, et cetera, and then, of course, ultimately impacting our students. So I'm going to try my best to put this in as plain of English as I can. So basically, like any business, a school district, although there are some significant differences between us and a business, which I'll hit upon, but at the end of the day, we have revenue, we have expenditures. How do they line up? And that's the bottom line for us from a financial perspective. So what you're looking at here on this slide, we began the year with $95 million in cash reserves. We're finishing the year, we think, with about $106, almost $107 million in cash reserves. So we are not in deficit spending right now. Most school districts, because of falling off the Esser Cliff, is what it's commonly called, are in deficit spending. We get there rather quickly, but we made enough cuts previously to hold this off. So our general fund revenue is $378 million, projected $367, of course, leaving us that $11 million. So where does that money come from? So our projected local property tax is $127 million. So local taxpayers pay about 34% of our budget, and state funding's approximately 54% of our budget, and the other 13% comes from a multitude of areas. So in totality, you can see our budgets rising, rising, rising. Class 1 taxes, class 1 taxes are your residential property. Class 2 is commercial business property. So I'm sure this is, this is what is so complex and so hard for people to wrap their head around, and it's a failed system. I'll give you that. It is a failed system. Tax increases, on average, in Akron were 40%. That's significant. But how did that affect us? I gave you a hint. Not all at once. House Bill 920, remember talking about House Bill 920? House Bill 920 freezes revenue, freezes tax collections in perpetuity. That local property tax does not increase, with the exception of a small percentage of it in what's called inside mills. And I don't want to get too crazy, but I also want to be transparent. There is a slight growth, but it's very, very small. So how, what happens when taxes go up, but we don't collect additional money? Mills are what's passed when we pass a levy, a certain number of mills. You have effective mills, and you have mills that were actually passed. So meaning, effective mills are what's actually collected. And you might be saying, "Well, why would it be less?" Because the county auditor has to, has to reduce the millage collection so that we don't get more money because of House Bill 920. So in 2022, which funded 2023 fiscal year, we were collecting at 46.7 mills. In 2023, because of the increase in property values, our effective millage dropped to 34.4 mills. I know that most people in the community just simply don't understand that. Most of our staff doesn't understand that. So that's a loss of 12.3 mills. It's just not collected. It's reduced. That is House Bill 920 passed in 1976 and codified in the Ohio Constitution. In other words, it's not going anywhere. So state aid, how, what's been happening in state aid? I've heard a lot of people talk about, again, very difficult decisions. Where do you build schools? Where don't you build schools? When do you close schools? Et cetera, et cetera. Not very long ago, we had 36,000 students. We have 19,352 at the start of the school year, and we're down to 19,237, and we haven't even hit summer. On a five-year average of, we're losing $1.3 million on lost students every year. Every year. Our state formula is impacted by the number of students that we have. So it's very simple. If we lose 200 students, times it by $5,800 is the current number, and that's what we lose. Student goes to a private school, that's what we lose. Student moves, that's what we lose. For whatever reason, when they exit the district, that's what we lose. Additionally, House Bill 110 says if you have a school building that has less than 60% occupation, occupied total number of students per the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, that building can be seized and purchased at market rate by a charter school or anyone else. So I hear oftentimes, "Well, we get a lot of money for disadvantaged pupil impact aid." In other words, kids in poverty. But over the next five years, we're projecting to lose $10 million in aid, not because we're wealthier, but because Ohio as a state is losing population and becoming a poorer state year by year by year. So the pot of money isn't growing, but it's being distributed more thinly across the state of Ohio. So we're projecting to lose 10 million in state aid. We did see positive growth in our state funding formula, so that's a positive thing. We're seeing about $15 million over the next five years, and that is helpful. Our investment income, so we do not, the money that we have, we don't sit on it. We invest it. We keep moving it around. We do the very best that we can. And this year, we're projecting, as of right now, we've earned a little over $2 million in our investment monies. So we're trying to, and there was a lot of response about, "Well, get out of the box. Do things differently." We are. You just might not know it. So expenditures. We were unaware until last year, at the end of, earlier this year, I'm sorry, that there was a contract that requires us to pay the last $6 million of the purchase of this building. I get, I get, I get the laughter, and I'll own that. The, the problem is that when that deal was struck, that was struck pre-COVID, about 2017, by an entire administration that's no longer here. And those payments weren't due for six more years. So as people turned over, it got lost in the shuffle. It's unfortunate. It's not good management. I'm the first to give you that. But that is what happened, and if we're going to be transparent, let's be transparent. We also have the certificates of participation, which is the loan essentially that we took out that's building Pfeiffer and Miller South. So those are $2 million roughly a year, annual payments, just like a mortgage. Now, the $23 million, $24 million in cuts that we're talking about, we actually, on a cut on our spending, only see about $5.9 million. What's that mean? That means when you add in, when you add in contractual pay raises, you add, you add in all of those things that naturally steps, all those things that naturally increase from year to year, the end-over-end actual of it is a reduction of $5.9 million. So when you look at our, our total current year fiscal expenditures, it's 309 million goes to people. This is where we start to be a little bit different than Ford Motor Company, for example. Ford Motor Company would never have that percentage in personnel. But we do, because we're a service industry. We don't make widgets. So you can see the, the total percentage of, of our budget, 84% of it is people. Say that again, 84% is people. Purchase services is hard to cut much. How are you not going to pay the light bill? Fuel a bus? Buy a bus? So the remaining portion of a budget is very difficult to maneuver. And wrong, right, or indifferent, I cast no, no personal opinion one way or the other, but the contracts across, and that's not unique to Akron, it's true everywhere. The lowest person on the totem pole gets cut. That's, that's just the way unions work. That's not a decision that the administration makes. That's a decision that is contractually placed in a contract. So I know this is very busy. Focus first on the one on the left, where you see the blue and the orange. The blue represents total revenue. The orange represents expenditures. We are in deficit spending, we dug our way out of it a little bit, but then we go right back into it, all the way across that graph. Orange being our projected expenditures. And if you look to the graph on the right, the blue, this is telling you what our cash balance is. The Ohio Department of Education recommends three months of cash reserve on hand at all times. We don't even, that's not a possibility for us. So we're shooting for two, which is roughly 60 million, of course, goes up each year. So you can see, based on our projections, that that cash balance goes down and goes down and goes down. On this graph, look again to the left, the annual change in revenue. It's a positive, it's positive. That's that state funding formula. We're seeing an increase of about 1.16%. But look at, look at our changes in expenditures. Our expense, our expenses are three to one. So we're far outpacing ourselves in what we're spending versus what we're bringing in. So you and your homes, if you've sat down with your significant other and you said, we're starting to drown, what do we do? If you can't increase your income, then you must do what? Cut your expenditures. That's what you'd have to do. So that is the situation that we're in, where you're going to see we're, we're recommending that we try to increase revenue, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility to balance our budget to the extent that we can. So this is days' cash on hand that I referenced just a minute ago. So you can see across the top, the number of days that we have, and we're trying to stay above 60. And we do that through 2026. And then in 2027, we have 24 days of cash reserves. And by 2028, we're minus 22 million. That is assuming that we make $23 million, $24 million in cuts. That's the assumption, to reach these numbers. Does not include a levy, does not include a levy, but it does include the cuts. So if you were to say, don't make the cuts, and I hear passion from students, from staff, which pulls it at anyone's heart who's human. But if we didn't make these cuts, that's a $110, $112 million deficit in 2028. You know what happens if you don't balance your budget, or at least get it under control? It's called state receivership, folks. And when state, when you fall into state receivership, the contract is null and void. The board is sidelined, and Dr. Robinson and I are do nothing except talk to a, a commission, which is appointed by the state. And we can't even write a check without the commission saying, do it. And the first thing they say is, cut the state minimums, which we're way above state minimums. Cut the state minimums and pass a levy. Well, do we want to try to keep ourselves out of state receivership by being surgeons? Or do we just want to let it, ride it out and then bludgeon ourselves at the end of the day? Not trying to pick on teachers, because this is consistent with every work group. You can see the blue is going year by year, showing the increase in teaching staff. The orange shows student enrollment. Since the start of COVID, we've added 427 employees. 427 employees, of which, in all, in all transparency, a chunk of them are administrators too. And that's a fact. That's a fact. But all of them, to include administrators, if you graph this out, would look the same. I could put any employee group up here, and it would look the same. This is, as we lose students and lose revenue, but maintain staffing levels, what you're seeing here is what it costs to educate a student per year. We're projecting in 2028 to be over $22,000 per student. That's very high, very high. That's 100, and the graph on the left shows you that in fiscal year '24, you spend $106 per student per day. That's almost as much money as a substitute makes for one student. In the pie graph to the right, you see that our state, federal, and business taxes and others are 81% of our budget, our revenue, and 19% comes from residential homeowners. So at the end of the day, what's the total impact on our five-year forecast? And this is where we find ourselves. The bottom of this cash ending balance, you see it says with no levy. So this does not, this does not model a levy passing in fiscal year '24, '25, '26. It doesn't model that. If you look at revenue surplus or deficit, there's that $11.3 million to the good that I mentioned previously, but then you see we move into deficit spending. Again, this includes the cuts. And we still end up with a $24 million deficit. So the reality is that we find ourselves in a difficult spot. Not unlike a lot of school districts. If we act now, we can mitigate this to some degree. But if we don't, then we're going to find ourselves in a whole bunch of trouble down the road. Unless something significant happens with state funding that I'm unaware of, have not heard of. We are at the mercy of what the state gives us, and we are at the mercy of our local community as we go to them to seek more dollars. So before I take your questions, I just have a couple of things I want to remind you of. Next, at that special board meeting, you'll be asked to do two things. You'll be asked to approve the five-year forecast, which I've just presented. And we'll ask you to approve the five, a resolution of necessity, which is the first resolution that needs to be passed in order for us to be on the ballot in November. The recommendation is that we ask for 8.9 mills. 7.6 of those mills would go to general fund. And 1.3 million would go to constructing a new North High School. If we can pass this levy, we can minimize these cuts. And I think that's what all of us want to do. We have to get on solid footing, and we currently are slipping down a hill. What are your questions?
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, for your presentation. Are there questions from our board members? Member Hall?
Thank you, President Autry. Dr. Thompson, I just want to say thank you for this. I think this presentation is probably the best, where you broke everything down, dotted every T, I'm sorry, dotted every I.
I did dot Ts too, yeah, yeah.
To where we can understand. You know, I think in the past, I felt like you were holding back some information, and that's why I always had questions. But this right here, you really gave me the information I needed, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, I love Akron Public Schools, I'm an Akron Public Schools graduate, and I don't want to see anything happen to Akron Public Schools either. But there are some things that we have to do, that we don't want to do. But we got to do it to try to save our district. I know it's not going to be good, it's not going to be pleasant, it's not pleasant for us. But there's some things we have to, I do not, and I'll say this again, do not want to see Akron Public Schools end up like Youngstown City Schools. I lived in Youngstown for a number of years. I left Youngstown because things were getting bad. I do not want to see Akron Public Schools become a school district like that. I don't want to see the city of Akron become a city like that. So we all have to do some things a little different, and we're all going to have to make sure that we can do what we can to make sure we save Akron Public Schools. So if we save Akron Public Schools, we save our students. If we don't, we don't save our students. And the students I've seen and been back and forth up the highway, down to Youngstown, it doesn't look good. So I don't want to see us get in this, in this situation. So I, I hope that we will all understand what Dr. Thompson has presented us with tonight. We all have to cut our own budgets, personal budgets at our homes, but we have to do what we have to do if we want to survive. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Are there any other questions? Mr. Perry?
Dr. Thompson, one of your charts there was talking about expenses. And I, I was trying to understand, you were saying that expenses went up from 0.55% to 3.18%. Could you give me a little bit of a deeper dive in what that actually means? Why is it going up so much, and what does that account for?
Yeah, so under annual change in revenue, it's pretty straightforward. We've, because, while we get a nice chunk from the state, and if you just hyper-focused on that, that, that percent wouldn't make a lot of sense. But then when you calculate in all the reductions we're getting, loss in student enrollment, et cetera, et cetera, it brings it down. So we, we are showing growth in revenue, but we're growing at 1.1%. As if you got a pay raise for 1.1, is that a 6, 1.16%. Our expenses are rising pretty significantly, because there are, there are a multitude of factors that are weighing in on that. You know, administration, custodial, teachers, everyone received raises that I think everyone would agree that they've earned, but they've, but they've, they've significantly impacted the five-year forecast. And then the same things that you are seeing in your home, fuel, electricity, all of those things that hit your home and have been driving up your cost to live, imagine it times 19,000 students, times 44 buildings. And, and so all of those things combined, our expenditures is just outpacing our revenue. And this, this, again, that, that annual change in expenses is assuming we make $24 million in cuts. It'd be even higher if we didn't.
Just a follow-up on that then. So are you saying the majority of that 3.18% is because of the raises we've given out?
I, I don't know that it's just the raises, but that's a, that's a significant piece of it, along with cost of living rising at 7%, that's 3.18%. So all of those things are creating pressure on the five-year forecast.
Do you have a second question, if it's okay?
Thank you, go ahead.
You also indicated that the cost to educate each student is going up. And it was pretty significant from 2019 until 2024, it was, what was that chart?
I'm going to find it, I hope.
It was 16,000 to 22,000. Why the, the big jump in that cost per student annually?
Let me find it. Okay.
Yeah, that one.
It's, as you can see, it just keeps stair stepping up each year, all the way really from, since COVID on. We saw the big jump coming out of, with Esser money. So, so in total transparency, also, another huge pressure on that revenue piece, our expenditures piece, is we hired a lot of people with Esser money. And then those people transitioned this year from Esser dollars to general fund. So that was about a $12 million hit, right there, just from those folks that hadn't worked in the district pre-COVID, but now work for the district. And it was a rather large expenditure. So it's as, you know, it's just the cost of doing business and what we're projecting to get from, you know, we have to project, and, and bear with us here as we try and, you know, we're, we don't have a crystal ball, we're trying to figure out what's, what's, what's the economy going to do? What, what, what's the state going to do in their biennial budget? What is the federal government going to do? What's our student population going to be? Are we going to keep losing 250 kids a year? Is it going to be more, is it going to be less? So I, I won't, I, I'll say that I try to be conservative, but I try to be accurate.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And please excuse my back, Mr. Treasurer. So the $12 million that you said went into the general fund after we came out of COVID. And it was $12 million, $12 million, excuse me, that were used from Esser funds, which I know a, a good portion of those funds were used to try to recoup learning losses, right? Yeah, so tutors, instructional coaches, different things like that, climate coach, excuse me. So my question is, auxiliary tutors, entitled one funds, tutors can be paid from these additional funds, which are not a part of the general budget, is that correct?
Yes, and, and, well, you know, I, I know that Keith and others in each one of the departments across the district do the very best we can to use title one, or title dollars, because there's multiple title dollars, the most effectively that we can. But remember, those are, you can't just use title dollars for anything you want. And at Dr. Robinson, that's very much in Dr. Robinson's, Robinson's wheelhouse. Is there anything you want to add to that, Dr. Robinson?
Well, I know they have, I've been in education 20 years, so I know I have to qualify in certain testing scores and socioeconomic indicators, which a majority of our students in Akron Public District meet those indicators.
Right.
And so.
All but two schools, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah, so we have a majority, like over 80% of our students qualify for title, title one funds. And so, so I'm clear on that, so I don't really need to superintend it away. And I'm just asking a question, because I know that those And I'm just asking a question because I know that those gap closing services are things such as tutors that both auxiliary, which will cover those who may not meet the socioeconomic portion of that or the low test scores. But title one funds will cover those other learners. I ask this because I also know that title, that these tutors typically, I believe, are required to be licensed educators. Correct? And so that kind of deals with, okay, all right. I know a majority of them were, I thought it was a requirement. That's why I want to clear it.
No.
Clarity is not. All right, so anyway, I'm saying that because when $12 million out of general funds, I'm just wondering for these gap closing services, tutoring services. And I know when we were looking, when I was researching, we had the issue with the, the other tutoring company coming in. And I was curious about, you know, the lack of tutors or us trying to hire and having openings to even field title and auxiliary positions within the district. What does that look like to kind of close that from though, from that pool of money versus that this $12 million came into general funds? And now I'm curious, what is this $12 million servicing? What services that is in general funds? Because gap closing services like tutors can come from auxiliary and title one funds. So I'm just curious, like this $12 million that we absorbed into general funds, what that's covering? You can put a pin in that because I know that can be another later discussion on Dr. Thompson. But that's kind of what I was curious about. And then my other question, just for clarity, because I've been looking through the agenda and I think I may be missing something. And so I, I just want some direction because I know on the last meeting, when we had the presentation about the cuts, and I asked specifically about the teachers. And our head of human capital explained that it was a compare, and please correct me if I'm misquoting, that it was almost comparable, the number of teachers that would be cut and administrators. I believe I was under that understanding. Is that, that, that it was said, that it was just that the number?
The percentage.
The percentage was about the same?
Those percentages were all pretty even across the board. All, correct me if I'm wrong here, the, you guys, somewhere around 7% was probably the average. 7% of each employee group, roughly.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll ask this and then, so that I'll get clear. Because when I see 52 teachers to be cut, and then I just saw only four non-teaching positions. I didn't see administrative positions on this agenda. I'm just, did I, is it, am I missing it somewhere in the agenda? Just. Oh, okay. Okay, I just kind of need, wanted clarity before a vote. Okay, and then also, Dr. Thompson, you did address that the contracts are the reasons that teachers with less years of service are cut first during the RIFs.
Correct.
I just want to restate that because when students ask the question, when highly qualified teachers with less service leave a district, it is, it is a serious blow to districts because they're coming with innovative strategies. They're doing a great thing. And until we rethink certain things in education, that just happens to be the structure that we're in. So I just want to reiterate that. And thank you, Dr. Thompson, for mentioning that so that people can be clear that it's not administrative things. Because, you know, in my world, my theoretical view, I, I believe in merit-based pay because you can prove what teachers are doing in classroom. But that's not the reality. So it's a seniority thing. So thank you, Dr. Thompson, and that's it. And I'll wait to hear from Human Capital about those administrative positions that are not present in this agenda.
So the question about the $12 million, is that a later answer? Or do you have it now?
Well, I can just tell you that those positions were a conglomeration of positions. They were multiple positions. They were, they were coaches, they were tutors. They, they were not one particular group. And since when we looked, when the ESER dollars ended, they stayed employed, which means now it was paid out of general fund. So the general fund absorbed that, those, that staff. So that's a $12 million change year over year from the previous fiscal year.
Did that answer? Go ahead.
It answered, but it didn't answer because I know when we talked about budget cuts and I said, trim the fat, get very lean. Because when you ask me about my house budget, I know I must have food. I don't have to have filet mignon and I don't have to have the trimmings. But the basis, I need food for nutritional values. A school district needs teachers, period. So if we're trimming something and we're talking about budgets, then I want clear, specific answers about certain monies. If I say auxiliary funds and title one funds can service tutors. So anything else in that, so tell me how much of that $12 million, respectfully, I say this, are those services? And then we look at the, because we take that out of our general funds. And then you could tell me directly if it's climate coaches, if it's, you know, and we can kind of, you know, work around things like that and talk about out-of-school time money that the state is providing and how we write grants to kind of cover it up in that way. But so that's why I said, I just, so it answers, but it, and I can wait till the.
And Mr. Lickety is here with his expertise.
Yeah, we're going to try to answer that more definitively. And as good-looking as I am, I don't know all the answers to everything. So I'm going to, oh, you guys are a tough crowd, man. Holy smokes.
So my name is Keith Lickety. I'm the Director of School Improvement. And so part of that role is managing our federal dollars. And so we oversee title one, two, three, and four in our department. And then also our non-public dollars, which include auxiliary, and again, those other funding sources. So on the public side, we, because of the lack of staffing and, and through COVID, we carried over about $6 million in our federal budget just because we struggled spending it. We couldn't send people on conferences. We couldn't do professional development. We couldn't find certified staff. Well, that money, we're slowly eating away at those rollover funds. And so, and during COVID, we were increasing the number of our tutors. We were up to about 160 tutors in Akron Public Schools. Unfortunately, we could not find 160 certified tutors. So half of those were what we call sub-tutors. And unfortunately, federal regulations require that we only, out of federal dollars, fund certified teachers. And so we had half of those employees funded out of ESER and then eventually rolled over into federal funds. So we are working with the state. We're petitioning our federal leaders because all of the urban districts are facing that problem. And so we hope to bring back more of those sub-tutors. But right now, we just simply cannot pay them out of our federal funds. And with the budget cuts, that was one of the areas that we were able to give back. Because we do have slated in our FY25 budget, 80 certified tutors. And we're working at staffing that now. I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Lickety.
Thank you, Keith.
I think you need to stay up there, probably. Mr. Perry?
Yeah, so, so just let's be frank here, Keith. How many of those 52 names are these sub-tutors that we're talking about?
I don't believe those are on the list.
Those are not.
That's not.
So I would like to see somewhere who these 52 people are, what schools they're at, what they teach, full-time, whatever we have. Is there a list I can have of that? I just have names here.
Well, I, I think what we're, if we could, I think we're bleeding into another agenda item. So, so at this point, you know, from, from my perspective of being the leader of the office that has to account for the dollars, it doesn't, from, from just a five-year forecast, it really doesn't matter to calculate it, who is who and where they're from. So that's not something we got into in the finance office. We just have the total number and worked from there. So the next presentation, I believe, will be more specific and answer more of those drill-down questions that I think you want to, want answered.
Okay.
And they love answering questions from you guys.
I can tell.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Are there any other? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the packet and the whole folder, very dense. I will try to spend time looking through it. I want to first give a disclaimer that I don't want the meetings to run over. I understand how good board administration relationships work. I'm not trying to have a gotcha moment in a live meeting here or anywhere else. I believe in clear communication. So when I send questions last week and I don't have answers to those questions, I feel forced to ask them in a live meeting. And so with that disclaimer, I will say, Madam President, I will have a lot of questions throughout the rest of the agenda today. For this specific presentation, I will try to narrow it down to three of those questions. The first one that I did submit, I think, May 15th. And once again, beautiful day, I know we all want to go home.
Your question, please, Dr. Molnar.
My question is, until last week, I have received five-year forecasts that always projected $15 million in cuts. Last Monday was the first time I received a projection with $24 million in cuts. I actually took a picture of this because it was the first time I've seen this and I don't know if I will ever get access to this PowerPoint again. Please, can you show me the difference between $15 million in cuts and $24 million in cuts? That is my first question.
The difference is roughly $9 million a year. So I'm not. So simple math is to take that $9 million a year and multiply it over the, the remaining five-year forecast. So let's say it's four years. There's an, you've created an additional hole of $36 million, which would show up on the back end of that five-year forecast. Because not only, we, we also have, we have cuts, but we also have reorganization and positions being put in place also. So the net had to be higher so that we stay black as long as possible.
So this time last year, when you presented to the board and recommended $15 million in cuts to the board, as a board member, when I voted yes to those $15 million in cuts, it's because I believed that as a district, that would keep us in the black for the five-year forecast. Are you saying now that with only $15 million in cuts, we will not be in the black?
That's correct.
What changed?
Additional expenditures.
What expenditures made that difference?
Staffing.
So are we cutting more people now to get to that $24 million because we have added positions?
It's part of the pressure. Sure.
Okay, I know that we have a lot of time. I do have more questions for the future. But my, just for the time of this, how many more times will the board have the opportunity to ask questions or receive information about this before we vote on a five-year forecast? And then what process will be available for board members to ask questions? And how should we expect to get answers?
All you have to do is make an appointment with me. You know, I have not been disrespectful to you people. Don't do that to me.
Proceed, Steve. And I believe he stated any questions regarding the five-year forecast to submit, please, by Friday, preferably before then, so that he can prepare them for us. And that includes community. If you have questions about the five-year forecast, send them to us in a manner so that the administration has the time to do the research and get the answers to the questions. Are there any other questions regarding the five-year forecast? Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson. And so just for the community's information, we do have a special board meeting scheduled, as was previously stated, in which we will have this on the agenda for approval. And so that's why it's imperative that if you have questions, please send them in time so that the team has, you know, the appropriate amount of time to answer the questions. And so next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. And up under that is the Fiscal Reorganizational and Restructuring Plan. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you, President Archery. Just want to acknowledge a couple of things as we get ready to get into the presentation. Thanking the Human Capital Department for the extensive work that was done to the Teacher of the Year program. And we want to also acknowledge, once again, Kristin Moore, ninth-grade algebra teacher at Garfield CLC, who was named the APS Teacher of the Year. And so congratulations to her. On May 14th, Aim High Akron Gear Up hosted a family celebration to recognize our ninth graders who have met the gear-up freshman goals of 90% or better for attendance. They had no discipline incidents and completing the Algebra One, and completing Algebra One by the end of ninth grade. And so congratulations to those scholars for their accomplishments. Had the opportunity to speak with the West Akron Kiwanis Club, which was a very awesome opportunity to be able to engage with our community and to just share some of the great things that are happening within our schools. Also had the opportunity to attend the Akron Urban League Scholars Event on May 15th. Again, where we had 13 of our scholars who made us very proud. Thank you. STEM High School graduation, congratulations to those scholars at STEM High School. It was really awesome being a part of their graduation. A lot was done in approximately 59 minutes, almost an hour, and it was really awesome. The Changemaker Summit was held May 16th. And thank you to Akron Community Foundation for their support for our eighth graders. And thank you to all of our teachers and our administrators. To Ms. Eubright's Department for the phenomenal work that they are doing and did to make this a success. It was very exciting to hear about many of the great opportunities that many of our scholars engaged in during that opportunity. The Arts and Business Sponsors Event was May 16th. And those programs promote and support the artistic talent of elementary, middle, and high school scholars. The Art and Business Program is on the board agenda as well for tonight's meeting. Miller South, I'm sorry, I was not able to make it to the event on Friday night, but I heard that it was phenomenal. And so just want to say hats off to Miller South and thanking them for a outstanding job. And now for Be Kind. Today, I'd like to talk about a practice that's being put into action at one of our schools, demonstrating our collective effort to promote kindness throughout the district. Vorus CLC established a practice where any teacher or staff member can nominate individuals who exemplify impactful acts of kindness. In this image, we see a group of fourth-grade scholars. Not sure if we have it up. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And just want to recognize our fourth-grade scholars who displayed the principles of kindness, compassion, and empathy. And so let's continue to celebrate these moments of kindness and strive to make our school, community, a beacon of warmth and inclusion for all scholars. And let's give them a hand again, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Keeping our mission in focus. Over a century ago, our city's leadership pioneered publicly-funded schools, reshaping the educational landscape. Today, the pulse of Akron beats in sync with the evolution of what's at its core, public schools. They are more than just buildings. They're beacons of hope, centers of learning, and communities coming together. Our story is shaped by what happens both in and outside their doors. A journey of challenges, triumphs, and focused commitment to our vision and mission. Our mission is clear: to ensure all APS scholars are college, career, and life-ready by providing innovative educational experiences. But our path hasn't always been smooth. COVID-19 disrupted our classrooms, our community, and our lives. But we adapted, we adjusted, and we kept moving forward toward our goal. In the words of James Baldwin, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." Our instructional corps remains steadfast. It is why we do what we do. We believe in the power of teaching and learning. It's not just about textbooks and tests. It's about sparking curiosity, nurturing creativity, and fostering resilience. And it's all built upon the four cornerstone that guide us: culture of safety and belonging, academic achievement, operational excellence, and family and community engagement. So as we navigate these uncharted waters, remember, a ship doesn't sail straight to port. It adapts, it adjusts, and stays on course. We're charting our course, guided by excellence, compassion, and the unwavering belief that education changes lives.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Ryan Rittenhouse and Tommy Bruno for working on that along with the communications team. And it just really depicts who we are as a school district. Change will not come if we wait for some other... I'm not sure what's happened with the presentation, but I'll move on. Thank you. Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek by Barack... President Barack Obama. Change and transformation are neither easy nor simple. They often create a fear of the unknown. For some, there is the notion that our cheese has been moved and that Station C, referencing "Who Moved My Cheese?" by Dr. Spencer Johnson, no longer exists. What we find happening in Akron is happening all over the country, and in school systems big and small, in cities that are thriving and in those that are struggling. I'd like to just capture, if we can get to that slide, please. Thank you. I'd like to just capture some of the headlines that have been in our newspapers across our state, across our country. Everyone is enduring the same things that we are. Our administrative team and I care deeply about our scholars and our employees. In fact, I want to applaud our scholars and our teachers for expressing themselves today by peacefully protesting. We would expect no less from the young people. We're shepherding through the earliest days of their lives in what are often quite challenging times. And in terms of our district as a business operation, because it really is that, APS has almost no other options than that which we propose to you tonight. A proposal made with our district adherence to our merit of legal contracts. I want to thank our board for entrusting me with the ability to lead our district and to ensure that we do this redistricting... Restructuring and reorganization with fidelity and integrity. I want to thank the Human Capital and Labor Relations team members, Ms. Yamini Atkins, Human Capital Executive Director for Human Capital, Mr. Devonbow, Mike Devonbow, Director of Labor Relations, Ms. Judy Newser, Benefits Manager, and Patty Russell, Human Capital Compliance Specialist. Their insights and collaboration with our finance team, our communication team, building leadership, and our senior leadership think tank team have enabled us to make informed decisions that prioritize fiscal stability and operational efficiency while upholding our standards of excellence in education. Many on our team will recall our late-night budget meetings, where we had, as we worked together, with one purpose in mind. Please know, we have carefully evaluated what is working well, identified areas needing improvement, and areas that we can no longer financially afford to continue. While these decisions are difficult, they are essential to ensure the ongoing progress of our scholars, our district, and our community's future. In so many ways, we have merged from... We have emerged from the half-decade of 2019 to 2024, knowing that we can... That we can and must continue... Discontinue kicking the can down the road. If we fail to restructure and reorganize, after looking at our five-year forecast, in about two years, we can be assured that Akron Public Schools will begin to enter into the phase of which is known as State Watch, State Takeover. Those conversations will begin and yield to the state's recommendations. I will work collaboratively with our board, our unions, our scholars, our families, our community, and our partners to ensure that APS remains strong. I am always about children, always have been. I'm called into this profession. I love our scholars, and yes, I support and ensure our employees also have the necessary resources that they need in order to do the work that they love doing. Collectively, we shall take our district to the next level, but we cannot lose focus on our scholars. I remember when I sat before this board and interviewed for this position, I said to them then, "If your budget situation looks anything like what most are going to look like across the United States, you're going to have to make very tough decisions if you want to remain viable and as a viable district." And I assured the board then that if I was selected as that candidate, that certainly I would ensure that we looked at those... At our budget and ensured that the cuts were made. As we move forward in this challenging process, please keep several critical points in mind. Number one, in 2019, 2020, there were plans and discussions regarding significant reductions and a levy at that time, but then there was COVID-19. As a result, we received ESAR or COVID-19 dollars. It's been 12 years since we have had a levy. We didn't have a levy in 2020, and now we're at a place and time where we need financial assistance in order to remain vibrant and sustaining our programs. Number two, prior to my arrival in 2023, our treasurer reported to us that the district had to reduce expenditures by $15 million to avoid deficit spending. Certainly, after being here a year, there was a profound need for us to increase $15 million. And what I can assure you is that next year, there will be a need to do more significant cuts and reductions. As my team engaged in a review of the current staffing levels and decreasing enrollment numbers, it was apparent that this would not be enough. We needed additional cost savings to lessen the impact of any future budget reductions. Even though the minimum threshold for reductions was set at $15 million, as information evolved, again, that figure was later adjusted to range... To a range of $15 to $20 million, to reflect the changing landscape of our financial challenges. We are also implementing the aftermath of our negotiations last year, yielding in $21 million, not including the benefits. This cost has to be absorbed. With COVID-19 funds, we were able to adjust class sizes. However, in the 24-25 school year, we may see a return to pre-COVID class sizes. And given the fact of our declining enrollment and the introduction of vouchers, of which we have no idea how many of our scholars may be pursuing vouchers, we find ourselves confronted with additional financial pressures. I know I'm very sensitive to the fact that our emotions tonight are very high, mine included. But I encourage us to pause and to recognize that we are working for the common goal of our district. It is unfortunate that we cannot go back to 2019 or 2020, but we are now in 2024, when we are faced with difficult decisions that, if not made, will result in our not being able to efficiently and effectively move forward. Each of us here shares a commitment to excellence. And again, we care about our scholars, and we do care about our employees. Despite the obstacles we may face, I am confident that together, we will overcome them and continue to provide the highest quality of education for our scholars. Emphatically, I know that we shall overcome. At this time, I'm going to ask our Human Capital and Labor Relations Departments to now provide the presentation and further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Madam President and members of the board, good evening. I'm Yamini Atkins, Executive Director for Human Capital. To my left is Labor Relations Director Mike Deffenbaugh. To my right is Attorney Chris Williams. And I also want to introduce Ms. Judy Newser and Ms. Patty Russell, who have been integral in... And we have worked collaboratively on the restructuring and reorganization plan that we're presenting today. I'm here to present to you information regarding the district's reorganization and restructuring plan. A booklet has been previously disseminated that contains detailed and technical information regarding savings that have been identified as part of this plan. This information is available on the district website as well. Before we begin, I would like to share with all of you that the district conducted a comprehensive workforce review and thorough examination of all positions in the district for operational efficiency and organizational effectiveness. In doing so, this office worked with our superintendent, Dr. Michael Robinson, the APS Treasurer's Office, internal senior leadership, including Dr. Carla Chapman, our Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for APS. And further, this information was shared with various local community leaders and stakeholders. All these leaders provided meaningful advice and counsel regarding the important and relevant information that the public would need in order to be fully informed regarding very complex issues facing this district. After all, these decisions do not just impact APS, but our entire Akron community. This holistic approach is necessary as we recognize that we are all interconnected regarding these big decisions that affect our community. We realize that many of you may be impacted through family members and friends that are employees of this district. We seek community support in the hard decisions that have to be made in order to move the district forward and to progress. Before I summarize the importance of why position and job reductions are needed, I want to highlight the cost savings measures that the district has taken in just the past six months. These are included in our reorganization and restructuring booklet. These cost savings measures include a position control policy, where we are regularly monitoring and evaluating the replacement of positions at different levels. This permits the district to control the overspending of personnel costs by ensuring that the number of required positions are not exceeded. Centralization of an attendance and absence management control system. Implementation of a time clock system. Management of overtime. Focus on staff training and development. Delegation of duties to a Labor Relations Department with district-wide oversight of the proper application of... the proper application of the collective bargaining agreements, and the application and enforcement of workplace rules and policies. These are just a few examples of steps already taken and will continue. Now, I want to summarize the need for the district to take further cost savings measures, and we have heard from Dr. Thompson and Dr. Robinson, but I think it bears repeating. This district received approximately $150 million ESER or grant dollars by the federal government to combat the COVID learning losses. In order to comply with the requirements of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant, ESER, monies were used for a variety of infrastructure needs that allowed for teaching and learning to continue during that period, including increases in staffing and primarily for instructional staff. At the time the ESER funds were distributed, it was understood that the additional jobs hired through ESER dollars would have to be absorbed by the general fund if they were to continue. To be very clear, these monies are no longer available to support these jobs. Additionally, the elimination of ESER, combined with obligations that the district committed to in previous contract negotiations, where the district agreed to cost-of-living adjustments of 10 and 1/2 percent, or approximately $21 million over a three-year period between 22 to 25, and the freezing of employee healthcare contributions in light of current inflationary medical healthcare costs have placed this district at a risk of running a serious financial budget deficit. To add to these factors, after COVID, there continued to be a steady decline in student enrollment. Since 2019, enrollment has decreased by over 1,300 students. During the same time, APS created 179 new classroom teaching positions. This graph illustrates the disproportionate relationship between student enrollment and staff growth. I also want to address the students and families of this district regarding the impact on student learning and on the safety and security of our schools. In regards to safety, this district has significantly increased safety personnel as well as implementing additional security measures over these past years. These measures include yonder bags, new metal detectors, bag scanners, and increased video monitoring equipment. These items actually diminish the need for extra staffing personnel. As a result, the decision to not fill vacant positions in safety and security was reasonable and provided the district with savings. In regards to student learning, the instructional core is always a focal point of our decision-making. While teachers with less seniority will be affected by this plan, teachers with more seniority will be returning to the classroom. Learning will not be compromised. I also do want to finally, before we begin with our slides, I do want to again thank those union leaders that worked and cooperated with this district. I do extend my thank you to them. So we can go ahead and proceed with our slides. As we begin our presentation, I want you to keep in mind three important words and their meaning for the purposes of our, for our purposes today. Attrition. Attrition means that when a person leaves a district, separates from the district, we don't replace that position with another person. Reduction in force, or RIF, as you may have heard, when we, when an identified person is attached to an eliminated position, this is called a reduction in force, or RIF. When you see the word RIF, we are referencing that a person is affected. Positions refer to an existing job in the district. When we eliminate a position, we may or may not equate that to a RIF. And as we go through this, you will, you will see how these terms are used. HC was very careful to evaluate positions and use attrition as the first step of consideration to try to meet budget deficit concerns. This was done to prevent a person from being riffed. Only after that did we look at the actual people that occupied jobs, which would result in a RIF. This is an evolving and fluid process. As I stand here today, the number of people that we have identified as being riffed continues to decrease based on the number of people that are leaving through attrition. Every time I receive a retirement, or resignation, or any other departure of an employee from the workforce, my list of anticipated riffs decrease. This will continue to occur, and you will see this as we present our slides going forward. Mike Deffenbaugh, Labor Relations Director, will be joining me with a review of the upcoming data slides. This first slide is, and it's in your, in the booklet that was provided, is basically showing all the departments that were reviewed and the amount of savings for each department that was identified to a total savings of $23.9 million. 20 million towards the general fund, from the general fund, 3.9 million from title grant monies. And again, by looking at this, you wouldn't know immediately how these positions were saved, how the, not positions, how these dollars were saved. So the concept of attrition and RIF will be broken down. I do want to point out, as I pointed out, as I mentioned earlier, safety and security, a savings was realized of approximately close to $500,000. And in that situation, this was where, because we were able to purchase a great deal of security equipment, we were able to not have to fill some vacancies. So the savings there is from attrition. This page shows the specific employee groups that were affected and the total number of employees in each group. What it points out is that the number of positions from those groups that were eliminated. It does not indicate number of people necessarily, it just indicates the number of positions that we eliminated. The total number of, of, the percentage of the entire district of positions that are being eliminated amount to 6.11%. I do want to point out that the administrators and AEA employees, teachers, temporary sub-tutors, the amount is very similar and comparable in around the 7.4 for the AEA groups and 7.5 for administrator groups. All groups were reviewed and considered.
The previous slide dealt with positions. This slide here deals with reduction in force or riffs. This additional breakdown shows what percentage of each group affected will be losing employment with APS. These numbers here do not include any of the attritional reductions, these are people, not positions. So as we look at this, and you look across the row, we have the groups across the district, total employees in the group, number of individuals being riffed, and the percentage of group being riffed. And I want to point out today, as we took a serious look and analysis of the entire reorganization or restructuring plan, 1.98% of current school-based staff, i.e. classroom teachers, will have their contracts suspended. As a reminder, the previous slide showed 7.47% of the AEA positions being eliminated. Here we are just looking at the school-based instructional staff, i.e. teachers that will be riffed. This is only 1.98% of the current total, or 52 employees. This slide looks at attrition, broken down by employee group. Attrition was defined earlier by Ms. Atkins. Out of 285 positions eliminations, 121.5 will be absorbed via attrition. Therefore, there are no current employees that are affected by these position eliminations. The 121.5 positions provide a savings of approximately $11.6 million. Again, the $11.6 million savings is without eliminating any employee's job.
Here, we're going to take a deeper look at our reduction in force. And again, as I reminded you, then we are talking about individuals, people. This is where people are impacted. Currently, 159 people will lose employment district-wide with Akron Public Schools. This includes 52 teachers, eight administrators. Eighty of these employees, almost half, work on a one-year contract and are reappointed annually. These are the, actually the positions that Keith Litke came up and talked about, the non-certified sub-tutor. They will not have a, they will not have a contract suspension, but instead will not be reappointed at this time for the following school year. This number, 50, 159, has actually decreased since the initial release of the restructuring plan that was put out. As a reminder, this is a fluid process, and attrition is continuously affecting our As we maintain our focus on the instructional core, let's take a closer look at the position, positions eliminated from our classroom, non-classroom teachers, and substitute, non-certified substitute tutors. This slide here represents the 201.5 positions that are being eliminated in these areas. Here, we are looking at positions, not people. 32% of the 201.5 eliminated positions are classroom teaching positions. Just to be very clear, this 32% of the 201, is of the 201.5 reduced positions. It is not 32% of overall teaching staff. We saw those numbers were actually at 1.98 for just teaching staff, and 7.47 for, for teaching, non, teaching staff and non-classroom teaching staff, and the non-certified sub-tutors. The, and again, as I explained, the non-certified sub-tutors hold a one-year temporary license. These employees are different than our licensed substitute teachers and our full-time licensed tutors. Those positions are not impacted. So let's take another look at the impact on our instructional staff. This chart further details a breakdown of where the attritions and where the riffs are stemming from. The first column shows the total number of positions eliminated. The second column, the middle column, is the number of teachers that were reassigned to a vacant position. And the last column reflects teachers that will be affected through RIF. Forty classroom, if you look at the first column, first row, 40 classroom teaching positions were eliminated during this annual staffing process for the elementary level. This number is primarily driven by the closures of Firestone Park and Robinson. But it also includes positions that were eliminated and are added due to enrollment changes. This process occurs annually in response to enrollment changes throughout the district. However, these 40 teachers, as you see in the middle column, were able to be reassigned to other positions and did not lose employment. The position was eliminated, not the person. 26.5 in the middle row, as we see, in the secondary level, 26.5 additional teaching positions were eliminated due to budgetary constraints. However, these 26.5 teachers were also able to be reassigned to other positions and did not lose employment. Again, the position was eliminated, not the person. At the last row, you will see that there were 50, there are 58 non-classroom teachers who work primarily here in the, in 10 North Maine, and do not provide direct instruction to our students, and they will be returning to the classroom. This will result, through the RIF process, 52 classroom teachers losing their positions through RIF. However, these positions are not eliminated. Each teacher losing employment will be replaced with a teacher returning to the classroom. The remaining six eliminations can be absorbed through attrition, meaning there are currently vacancies in the district for six of the 58 affected teachers, resulting in 52 teachers currently being affected because of attrition. So that number decreased from previous information. Because of the attrition process, it is continuously being affected, where it affects the number of, of, of positions that are actually having to be riffed, because we're able to get that savings through attrition.
This slide is a good summary of riffs, attrition, and position eliminations. So these next two slides really bring it all together to show the board the combination of riffing as well as engaged in attrition to get a savings for the district. And it also provides a great visual representation of the fluidity in action. This information on this slide is already out of date, as we have had retirements and resignations that bring us to overall riffs down from 169.5 last Monday to 159 today. So that the number's decreasing. And I think this chart right here really brings it home on analyzing what we just talked about and puts it in one slide. As shown on this new slide, 121.5 of the 285 eliminated positions will not affect any permanent staff member. This equates to $11.6 million in savings. Again, the attrition, in attrition, no employee receives a RIF. We just simply don't fill a position. 159 of the eliminated positions will result in an employee being either riffed or not reappointed. This equates to $11.8 million in savings. You can see that there's a relative, relatively equal distribution of savings between positions being eliminated via attrition and positions where a staff member will be riffed. Combining attrition plus riffs, the district saved $23.5 million, and I think this alludes to what Dr. Thompson indicated about taking a surgical approach.
We really wanted to make sure that we broke this down and hopefully we're able to answer some of the questions that were already being asked earlier this evening. But, but ultimately, you know, as a district, it is our fiscal responsibility to be credible in our, and responsible in how we are handling our finances in order for us to move forward. Akron Public Schools, and this is from our blueprint of excellence, will evaluate and optimize operational efficiency by strategically repurposing existing positions and creating new roles, ensuring alignment of responsibilities to enhance overall effectiveness and efficiency within the organization. The fiscal reorganization and restructuring plan underscores a fiscally responsible approach that ensures a district is right-sized while minimizing adverse effects on student outcomes. By strategically evaluating and optimizing operational efficiencies, the proposal includes reallocation of existing positions and introduction of new roles to align to the strategic blueprint. The goal of the reorganization and restructuring plan is to preserve what is most essential to APS's mission and values. However, it is not possible for the district to retain the current staffing levels. Tonight, the superintendent is requesting that the board vote to adopt the three resolutions before them, Resolution 24-76, 77, and 78, in order for this district to move forward with the reorganization and restructuring plan. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. We will now entertain any questions, please, at this time. Member Hall.
I guess I'll go first all day. But, so thank you for this. Just a quick question, I think it's like the third page before the end, where it said 58 non-classroom positions, was that 58 teachers that don't teach in the classroom?
Correct.
And six are being reassigned, they're going back to the classroom, or no?
Six, six of them, we've received resignations and retirements, so those positions were able to reduce the number of, of, of individuals that would be riffed. So that's what that means, and that's why it's down to And that's why it's down to 52.
Okay. And then one more question. Mr. Duffin Ball, you had said, the total that would be eliminated, 169.5 positions, that we're down to 159 now, I'm sorry, 169.5, we're down to 159, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Does that also include the numbers that are in our packets today for the agenda? Because I was, kind of looks like there was seven more, like resignations or retirements. Is that number included in that too?
Everything, everything that's being included tonight is either previously approved by the board or on tonight's board agenda.
Okay.
As far as what the attritional retirements and resignations are coming from.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Perry.
So, so I'm still kind of confused on this whole non-classroom, the chart that my colleague there was referencing here. So I understand what you're saying as far as attrition goes. People retire, whatever reason they move on, we don't replace those people, right? That's attrition.
Yes.
With the 52 that are losing their jobs on that one chart that we're talking about, these are non-classroom teachers. They're not actively in our classrooms teaching our kids right now.
So what's, what's happening is, is that the district is moving the non-classroom positions that are here in the, in the main office back to the classroom. That will result in the RIF process that is going to look at 52 people who would be affected by that. And there is a process that, that would have to be considered. Seniority is one of the main factors that have to be considered, but we have to follow contractual guidelines and state law. Seniority is one factor, certification licensure is another, and I think evaluations are another factor. All these factors have to be considered. So while the individuals, you know, so it will just ignite that, that RIF process where we have to go through that, and ultimately 52 people are affected.
So, as a follow-up then, 52 bodies from this building will be moved back to classrooms? But they will, at some point, you'll go through those, those things you listed there, seniority, other things, and determine how many of those 52 are actually going to stay or leave?
They're, they're, you know, it's based on seniority.
Sure.
And ultimately, by, by send, by making the determination that these positions here within this building will be eliminated, that will then ignite that RIF process, and then we'll have to determine who will be affected, and that is something that we've done, who would be affected based on those, those RIF procedures.
Okay.
That, so it's not necessarily the, the individuals here in this building. It probably will be the folks that are less senior, and those, that is pursuant to state law and contract.
And I think that's where I'm still getting lost, Jomani, because it sounds to me, again, I can understand reclassifying somebody, moving someone from here to there. I, I get that part. But as a follow-up to that, then, we're going to look at them when they're moved there and figure out who gets to stay and who leaves, right? Based on what you said with seniority and other factors.
Right.
So, some of these people that are going from here to there are going to be teachers there, but not here.
Correct. They were not functioning as teachers. We don't have classrooms here in this building. So, they would be going back to the classroom. These are teachers.
Okay.
They would go, be going back to classroom teaching, and by identifying that those positions are eliminated, we would conduct a RIF process to determine who actually would be affected in terms of job employment loss.
Okay. I don't want to take all the time off. Yeah.
Other questions?
Try to process this.
Do you have a question, Dr. Monar?
I do. First, I want to say, unfortunately, I know more about RIFs than I ever would want to, because I graduated during the recession. So, the first teaching job that I had in November, the levy failed, and so in January, I had an interview with the principal to let me know that, you know, because I was new, a new teacher, and because of the seniority, I was going to go. But luckily, I was a middle school math teacher, so I got a new position at a different school the next year, whose levy failed that November. So then, I actually remembered this Friday, it was at the Rubber Ducks game, the Oatmilkers game, and I ran into the principal of the school that I was teaching at, and he said it was still, like, he still felt terrible that he had to interrupt the pep rally to have me walk to the superintendent and have an interview with the superintendent in December about exactly what happened, you know, where I was and the seniority of things. I worked for a series of charter schools. There were regular RIFs, often by email. It was common to lay off 15 people just to hire 10 new ones. And they did this every year, sometimes twice a year. And I'm prefacing this because, as it relates to questions that I did ask in email last week, and to the comment when I asked the treasurer earlier, we voted on 15 million cuts, $15 million in cuts in July. I have been asking since December, when are we going to find out about this? Because it is now May, and I felt bad, because I know December, January was a reason, you, a general time for most districts to do that. And these are people, they're our people, and it relates to our long-term strategic plan. And so when I hear that we are, from our treasurer, half an hour ago, something like that, that we are now riffing $9 million more in cuts, almost double, one and a half, because of adding positions, I see on the last slide here, it says, "We're strategically repurposing existing positions." So if we are strategically repurposing existing positions, how is there a $9 million gap? $9 million doesn't feel like repurposing. Can somebody please help me to understand where that came from?
So I don't know if the treasurer, or...
I think that's more of a, yeah, that's something you'd be asking the treasurer, quite frankly. He made that statement.
Well, first of all, I'd like to correct the record. I didn't say that 9 million was because of repurposed positions. I said it was a contributing factor, but it isn't the sole factor. So, for example, we have the 40 teachers that work in this building that will receive RIF notices. Many, those jobs weren't here because they were just goofing around. Those jobs were here because they were filling vital roles, and they were labeled OO6, which is a teacher position. But they probably shouldn't have been, but they were and have been for, I don't know how long, a number of years. But they were really filling, for the most part, administrative-level positions. So, some of those positions have to come back. Have to come back, because who's going to do that work? It, I, I suspect it's not 40, obviously, but some of them are coming back. So when you're, when you're reorganizing and creating, creating some positions, that's a piece of it. Additionally, a huge piece of it is, as we talked about, the Esser Cliff. Those, all those Esser people coming back into the general fund, that contributed to it. So, you know, it's a lot of factors that all played a role into it, but certainly adding positions doesn't help the five-year forecast, but also, the work has to be done. So it's, it's that difficult balance of, what do you keep doing and what don't you keep doing?
But the Esser Cliff was part of the five-year forecast that was presented to us last year when we got the $15 million. The contract negotiation was part of the $15 million that was presented to us last year. The only new information that I am hearing, that I'm aware of, is the addition of new positions, and I am wondering, is this a buffer to create, because of my trauma, because of my experience where we would fire 15 people and hire 10 more? Are we cutting positions with a buffer to be able to create new positions? And I did ask, a week ago now, to understand, you mentioned position control in the last meeting. I asked if the board could learn, if there was an example of position control, so we could see how these positions, what clusters, what programs, how these positions are being identified.
So I just, you know, I, as far as position controls, the, the point of having that is that, and Dr. Robinson has been doing this, you know, as far as I know, since he's been here, but it's always evaluating the positions that need replacement. And that is part of the position control process, because, you know, and, and this is something that perhaps, when there's determinations, which I do not have that, you know, we don't have that information at this point for this meeting, in terms of how we move forward with repurposed positions, or what new positions we're, we're going to be, you know, presenting to the board. But ultimately, it's determining what is efficient for this district, what are the type of positions that we can maintain to get the work done, but, but how we're doing it. And I think those are conversations that have to occur after we first identify how we can look at our financial situation that we're in. Again, we don't have those determinations made at this point. So it is part of our process of looking at those type of positions going forward, and how we'd be repurposing positions or restructuring departments, and how some of that work would be done. So I, if that's how I would describe it, I don't know, Dr. Robinson, if there's anything you want to add to that, but that's pretty much how I think we'd be evaluating this going forward.
Right. Thank you. So I think you've explained it very explicit, and position control is not something, honestly, that the board deals with. That is something that we deal with on the operational side, and that's what we're trying to get put through the system this year, because I don't know what was done before I got here. I just know that this year, we have sort of manually, if you want to say it in that term, been ensuring that we don't overstaff. So I've been very, very prudent and very careful in making sure that we were not hiring more staff than what we needed. And so if you want to look at it in terms of manually regulating that, that's what we were doing. But that will be done through a system, once we're able to get it all put together. It, it's, it's more on the technical side, but it's not something necessarily that the board is going to be regulating, because that's not a board function. That is something that's done through the operational aspect of things. What we do is to ensure that you have a balanced budget. How we regulate positions is not a board function. That is the function of the superintendent, and that's the function of the superintendent's designees, which would be human capital. So, we have been relentlessly making sure that we're not hiring more staff than what we need. I was very careful with that from the day that I got here, to make sure that I don't overstaff. There were schools asking for certain positions. I wasn't able to give them. Number one, we didn't even have the people applying for the positions, but I didn't even have people that I could move into certain schools, because if I take two from you and bring over here, they now have one or none. So it was very difficult in some cases, and more, this was more along our elementary schools. But, yeah, we, and, and honestly, we have additional things that we probably should have been looking at, but I said very openly and candidly, I do not want to decimate schools. I was a principal in a public school, so I understand that we don't have all of the resources and, and things that sometimes you might be able to get in a charter school, or even in a private parochial school. And so our resources are very limited. And so I've been able, I, I had to manage with what I had, and I didn't come from a district that was very rich in money. I came from districts that were urban and poor and rural. So we have been monitoring this, and in terms of added positions, I want to make sure that that record is clear. When we did the Blueprint for Excellence, we were very clear that the communications department in this school district does not exist. You cannot run a communications department with one person. For a district this size, I've actually been helping with communications on some ends of things. Thank goodness that we had Ms. Joanne here, and Mr. Mark has been doing a lot, but they cannot run what we need as a district to communicate with families, to ensure that we, make sure that our families know all the things that we have going on in our district. That's happening, and, and Ryan, that's happening with three people, and it's running them short. We're not even able to cover 90% of the schools in this district to share the great things that are happening, because we don't have the people to do it. And what I, what I am implementing is not even what I would consider, it's still a bare-bones communication department, so we're only looking at three people, and we're asking them to come with 10 sets of skills, because I can't hire a department that would typically, for this size of a district, because I am aware that our finances just don't allow us to do that. So in terms of, I want to make sure that it's clear that we're not just down here hiring a whole bunch of positions, because sometimes when things are communicated, it is not communicated as facts. Sometimes it's communicated and it's not, it's not supported by facts. So I want to be clear that, why would I cut and reduce and then jack up the budget again? That would be insane. So, we are being good stewards of the money that we have, and I need to make sure that the public understands that, that we, it is not our desire to, and let me back up. When I first got here, I was questioned about the 58 teachers here in this building. I didn't even know teachers worked in central office at this building. So as we looked at what was going on and discovered that this is the issue, well, what we would essentially be doing, Dr. Monar, is we would be increasing the, the number of teachers that we, so you have 58 teachers here that work here, right? But I'm going to cut teachers in the building, or I'm going to hire teachers, I should say, in the building, but I have teachers that are here, that are actually classroom teachers, and given where we are, the constraints of budget where we are, we have to send those teachers back to the classroom. Unfortunately, it, you know, as I read most of the emails and responded as fluently as I can, from our kids, that, yeah, the teachers that we love and we've built bonds with and, and we connect with are the teachers that you're going to release, but I don't have any other choice, because I have to make these cuts. And I can't keep those teachers and release teachers who have more seniority. We have negotiated agreements and contracts that we have to follow. So we have been very relentless in ensuring that we follow the contracts to the letter of the law. And in terms of adding these, all these positions, that, we're not adding all these positions, but I was clear in communicating that communications, we did need to add something there. When you're talking about some of the other positions, that's coming out of title funds. So that is not even impacting our general fund. So I'm not sure what all these positions are, but I'm being very clear and succinct that we are not going to increase the number of positions when we're already having to cut. It's counterproductive.
So Superintendent, you told me, as a board member, what I shouldn't know about operations.
That is clear.
So I do want to say that the Center for Public Education and National School Boards Association laid out eight characteristics of, of effective school boards. Number five is that effective boards are data savvy, they embrace and monitor data. It is important to clarify that informing the board about operational matters relevant to an upcoming vote is distinct from board members being involved in operational tasks. Access to pertinent information is essential for us to make informed decisions. People's lives today are the decisions we're going to be making, and understanding the operational context of a proposed budget, budget change is crucial for evaluating the potential impact on our organization's strategic goals, which we, as a board, are responsible for. And board members need to fulfill their fiduciary responsibilities effectively. Yes, that does not cross into day-to-day operations. So when I ask questions...
Dr. Monar, do you have a question?
I do. I have 10 that I ask.
Ask the question, please.
I was responding to what he said to me.
Regarding the presentation. Ask the question, please.
Regarding the presentation is that, the question that I emailed on May 15th, and I need to find it, was that it looks like we are going to rift... we are going to riff 13 teachers with pre-K licensure. In the Blueprint for Excellence, it said we are expanding pre-K. We recently had a whole situation where we were expanding pre-K.
Dr. Molinar, could you please ask your question? We are in the midst of a presentation around the fiscal reorganization and restructuring. Your question should be germane to that, what we were just presenting.
So if we are ripping 13 teachers with a pre-K licensure, does that mean we will not expand the number of teachers or the number of hours being taught in pre-K? Please help me to understand how we will have less teachers teaching pre-K while expanding pre-K.
Why don't we have, maybe we can try to get that answered from?
So with some of our pre-K license, they don't qualify to teach some of our pre-K. So even though they may have a pre-K license, they don't qualify to teach pre-K due to the requirements that are needed with our early learning preschool classrooms, which is a dual licensure. They need to have an intervention specialist license as well as their early childhood license because they're servicing kids who have requirements for having an IEP. And then also, it's an early learning preschool.
So does that mean we will need to rehire?
Those teachers that hold those dual licensures are not the same teachers that you're referring to.
Are we going to add pre-K positions? I asked 10, I tried to ask.
Can you wait to be recognized by the chair? You've asked several questions. There are other board members who may have questions. And so we can't go through the encyclopedia of questions. I understand your point, Dr. Molinar. And I would just like to respect the presenters at this time. So if you have a concise question to ask additionally, please do so. And if there's any other board members.
I understand everyone's time, which is also why I, Madam Chair, I'm just addressing you right now. Why in the beginning of my very first question today, I said I asked questions via email so we could spend the week having someone explain this information to me. Because I know not everybody wants to sit here right now and do this. But because no one responded to me, how else and when else am I supposed to get information that I am going to vote on in 20 minutes?
Well, maybe that will form your decision for your vote, Dr. Molinar. But we can't sit here and answer questions in perpetuity.
Do other board members receive information that I don't receive?
This is not the place for us to have this conversation. The topic at hand is the presentation we just received. And do you have any further questions on the presentation that we just received? You've asked several. In all fairness, I have to open it up to other board members. Do any other board members have any further questions? And if not, I am a board member, even though I'm the president, so I do have a few myself. And I just wanted to emphasize that I know this is all, there's a human factor that cannot be avoided. There's a human factor that cannot be avoided in this situation. That's just the bottom line. More than one thing can exist at once. This is difficult. This is not pleasant. This is not what I was thinking about when I wanted to be on this school board. I'm thinking about children and the future of this city and the children who depend on this district. And so, no, I'm not happy that teachers who are connecting with our young students are going to be affected by this. But what I am encouraged by is that it is a fluid process and that there's potentially an opportunity that some of these teachers can possibly return. But no, I don't, I wish I had a magic wand. If I had a magic wand, it'd be a lot of things different. But the truth of the matter is, we're here to make difficult, tough decisions, even when we don't like the answers. And so that's what I would like to say.
Madam?
Yes, so I just developed a question based off this discussion. So to Member Molinar's question. So I understand that it takes a dual licensure. So currently, the pre-K teachers with the dual licensures that we have in place will be able to service us. Do we have enough that at this, the stage? Because I understand, I believe Superintendent, the expansion will be over. It would take stages as we grow because enrollment, we have to see enrollment. And the enrollment has to speak to the human capital we'll need to service the classrooms.
Yes.
Okay, so currently, those who we have that are still employed within the district based off of the enrollment or anticipated enrollment, we, we're not looking to have to hire based off our current information.
No, we have no need as of right now, we don't have any need to hire for our early learning preschool program.
That's just a clarification that I think.
Can I just remind the board that the matter before this board, and I do appreciate the questions. We're happy to answer all your questions best we can. But the matter before the board here is the reorganization restructuring plan. We are not presenting here positions to be filled or positions that, those things are things that we are currently would have to evaluate and determine and bring to the board if there were positions that we were filling or jobs that we were creating. So that is the procedure. Right now, we are focusing on the restructuring reorganization plan, which includes the resolutions that are the process of implementing the RIFs and the recall rights of the employees. Thank you. We'll take Madam Vice President and Mr. Perry.
Thank you for that, Yamini. Because I understand that's why we're here. And so these questions that I'm asking about the 52 cuts of teachers, it will impact how I vote. And so since I understand that the restructuring of the vote is tied to that, for clarity, this discussion is determining my vote, which I'm clear on how I'm voting now. And so I'm asking these questions as far as the reduction of staff, of classroom teachers and things, because it's relevant for the decision I'm making. It would be, you know, is it a classroom teacher? Is it a tutor? When I see science, math, English language, social studies, 1 through 8, 4 through 9, it's relevant for the restructuring. My, the questions are relevant for the decision-making. So thank you for reiterating that. But I am clear, and this is why I'm asking the questions, because as is often said, we don't make widgets. We educate minds. So teachers are very necessary. So I look at cuts. I think the last, absolute last cuts should be classroom teachers, in my opinion. So thank you for that extra information. But I'm clear. And I think I have enough information for myself to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Yes, quite frankly, how many students are being affected? We've heard all these numbers about the teachers and different, you know, parts of the system. But do we know how many students are going to lose these, you know, these teachers?
Zero. So we are not compromising teachers in the classroom. We are not, we're cutting really, the positions that are being eliminated are non-classroom teachers that are here in this building. Those individuals are going back to the classroom. So those positions, we are not compromising the complement of the, or the, or the teachers for the students.
So I guess just as a quick follow-up, I'm sorry. You know, we all got these emails from students saying they're losing teacher X, Y, and Z.
Because of the RIF.
They're not saying somebody downtown is coming to my school and they're going to be, these are their teachers. They're saying day-to-day teachers. Where am I being lost in that?
So because of the RIF process, when we send the individuals from this building back to the classroom, then that will initiate this process called RIF. And those individuals that are less senior would be affected. And less, and like I said, those factors that have to be considered pursuant to contract and state law. And again, Dr. Jackson, I wasn't trying to say that the questions were not important questions. I just wanted to bring our attention to the fact that what's being presented in the resolution was related to the RIF process and the recall rights of the employees. So I, again, the position issue was raising some confusion and I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Because this is, okay, this is, this, that explanation matters. That's a significant explanation. Because that's not what I was understanding. So the classroom will not be impacted because the 58 employees here that are licensed teachers are going to fill those positions within the classroom.
Yes.
It's just based off a seniority basis that those.
Correct.
All right, so the classroom is not being impacted directly.
By bumping, yes, bumping rights have to be implemented. Right.
Okay.
And that's what happens, yeah.
Ms. Jackson, Dr. Jackson, sorry. They, they are, you know, the classrooms will be filled with certified teachers. But to the point of the emails, which I read several of them, and I'm still going to continue to read them and respond to the students because it means that much to me that they sent it advocating for their teachers. And what that means is that the teachers that they currently have now, they may not necessarily be the teachers that they have when they come back. And that's the concern that our kids are posing, that you, you know, these teachers, you're going to send me some new teachers, you know, but it's, but I already have relationships built with these teachers that I have right now. But because some of those teachers that they're referring to do not have the seniority, then they have to move down. And again, this is a fluid process. We do not know that by the time school starts, we don't, we don't know that over the summer, you have resignations. We don't know. They could possibly have some of those same teachers right back with them next year. We just don't know until we get, unfortunately, until we get to that point. And for a child, sometimes that's, that's not easy to understand that. You know, because these are the people that I bond with. But they're going to have a certified teacher where, as best we can possibly do because we're going to move these teachers into the classrooms. But that means that those other teachers go on what we're calling a waiting list. So that as openings come, and it's been almost daily that we've either had a resignation or a retirement, then we, by seniority, we move those teachers off that list and they kind of go in place. So we just don't know. But we won't know that until we get closer to the school year because many things do happen over the summer with staffing. And some of these, I don't know. By the time school starts, the number could go down to 10. It could go down to 20. We just don't know.
And then too, I wanted to add to what Dr. Robinson was saying because we have such awesome programming in Akron Public Schools as it relates to our College and Career Academies. We have IB in some of our elementary schools. And we have Chinese Mandarin being taught in three of our elementary schools. And just the programming alone, we're hoping will bring back students, which will increase our need to have more teachers. And so we'll be monitoring classroom sizes as well, working with Dr. Lash's department. And so once we see that numbers are rising at buildings, we will adjust accordingly as it relates to increasing staff at particular buildings or grade levels based on student enrollment. So because we're so fantastic with what we do here with educating our students, we're hopeful that we'll get some of our children back too, which would also help with staffing.
Thank you. Member Hall?
Thank you, President Autry. Quick question. Mrs. Carter, you had just said you'll be monitoring the classrooms.
Sizes.
Sizes.
Mm-hmm.
So my question is, and it can be human capital too, with so many call-offs and so many substitute teachers in the building because teachers may be calling off, not showing up. There are some schools that lack administration and other teachers. And I know this is based off of seniority and things like that. But those senior teachers that are not showing up and principals have to send out emails daily asking other teachers, can you cover this classroom? How is that impacted? Because if people aren't showing up to work, but they're keeping their jobs, how, how does that balance this?
I guess, you know, some of the things I talked about at the beginning of my presentation were the things that we put and implemented in place just in these past six months. Dr. Molinar actually mentioned she wanted to know more about this concept of position control, things like attendance and management systems. We have centralized that process in human capital. We have people who are focusing on those issues, working with principals. We have a lot more eye on managing the workforce, management of overtime. These are management issues that are, that are just day-to-day things that we really need to make sure that we have a strong handle on. And if we don't, that's also a place, and you're absolutely right, where we lose, we lose, you know, we lose money. So these are very important things that as managers, training and development of employees was one of the things that I talked about. We intend to ensure that these are the things that are being focused on, that we are addressing these issues continuously.
Also, Dr., Ms. Hall, Labor Relations is going to be working with our administrators and supervisors here this summer around progressive discipline because what you're talking about is something that would be addressed by Labor Relations. If a teacher is not showing up to work or an employee, doesn't have to be a teacher.
Anyone, yes.
Then that, there's a process that they have to go through in terms of documenting, working, I mean, the plan, state plan. There are things that have to be done, and that's unfortunate. Having been a principal, yes, you will have those teachers or those employees in a building where you're going to have to deal with and address those matters. And you just let a teacher go that would have been there every day. But when, but we do have to respect that we have contracts and we have to follow those. And seniority is a part of those contracts.
And then just a follow-up question. Thank you for that, you both. Substitute teachers, are they paid out of the general fund? Were they a part of the ESER fund at the time and moved over to general fund? Or were they always paid out of general fund?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Honestly, I'm not sure.
Maybe the sub-tutors, I'm not sure. Because Dr. Thompson, when we started, you weren't in your position at the time, Dr. Thompson, when we started hiring sub-tutors. But at one point, I thought we were going to be paying them with ESER and then it ended up moving over to general fund. But we'd have to probably go back and research at what point.
So we're spending so much more money getting all these subs and.
Well, sub-tutors were hired because we couldn't find enough, because a lot, most times, people want full-time jobs with benefits. And so our tutor position is a 24-hour position and people.
I'm not talking about, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I'm not talking about tutors.
Oh, I thought you said sub-tutors.
Substitute teachers, I'm sorry. That's, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, my apologies. Substitute teacher, is that coming out of general fund?
Yes.
Or was that ESER fund? Because I know during the pandemic, it was so many like substitute teachers coming in, making 160, 180 an hour. That's all general fund.
Yes, and we increased, at that moment, we increased the daily rate only because of COVID and a lot of people weren't wanting to come in to work.
So is that dollar amount still high or has it been decreased?
We're back to our normal daily sub-rate.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Dr. Molinar?
I'll try to keep it short. I have a comment first about the subs. My son, my son right now is in a class with a long-term sub for the rest of the school year because his teacher had a baby. So there are reasons why teachers don't come in sometimes.
Oh, absolutely.
So the question. So on the slide, I don't know what number it was, but it said number of positions eliminated, 66.5 positions eliminated. So I'm trying to reconcile again, the 66.5 here for the instructional faculty breakdown with the employment loss of the 52 repositioned. And I would like to confirm that there will be no change in student-teacher ratio. That was the one question I asked on Monday and emailed on Tuesday. Please confirm that there will be no change in student-teacher ratio.
And so the response that was given is the same as what I'm going to say today, is that right now, we are trying not to put at the maximum number of students in a classroom. But I can't guarantee that. There is absolutely no way I can guarantee that a classroom will not be at a maximum capacity. It depends on the number of students. And that determines the number of teachers that are allocated to a school when you look at your staffing model. So it depends on the number. So, it depends on the number of students we have in that particular school, in that particular grade, in that particular content area. That determines how many teachers and sections, especially when you get into high school master scheduling, that determines the number of sections you're gonna have in a particular content area, but it's all based on the number of students. So, we don't know that. We just know what we have right now that we're gonna roll over, but we don't know come the first day of school, you have kids that will, will have vouchers, you have some students who will move, you have some students who are gonna come into the district, we, but that is something that we will be monitoring, but that's not something I can sit here today and say that come the first day of school, that you might not have a classroom that might be at the max capacity of, of the student numbers, student population in that class, student-teacher ratio. It is my goal, and what I was trying to do, especially in kindergarten through third grade, I was really trying to keep the numbers very low. Very low meaning at a minimal between maybe 18, 19. We were able to support teachers this, uh, schools this year because we had some overage when we got to the October 1st count, and we were able to disperse those teachers in schools that were sort of busting at the seams. But I can't guarantee that I'll be able to do that because I don't know the number of students, because we didn't even anticipate, and those numbers were before I got here, but once I was here, we didn't anticipate that we would have in some schools, I know Mickey Bright was one of them for sure, where we had to add additional teachers to bring the numbers down. So, I was trying to do that this year, but given the fact that I have to make these cuts, I'm not able to do that. So, I don't know how many students might be in a classroom. It could be 24 over here and 18 over here. I don't know, it just depends on the number of students that are in that school, in that grade, in that classroom as to how many teachers, but it's, teachers are allocated based on the number of students that you have in a school, in a grade, in a content area.
Thank you. Question regarding that slide about the 66.5. We covered that in this slide, if you recall, Dr. Molinar. Forty of those 66 were the elementary positions that were identified due to school, when we did the school.
Closure.
Redistricting, Robinson and Firestone Park. And so, ultimately, we, you know, we got to 40 teachers, all those individuals are reassigned, okay, to different positions. The remainder, 26.5 secondary positions also were reassigned when we went through and did, you know, due to the budgetary constraints of reviewing secondary positions, we also reassigned all those individuals. So, all 66.5 are reassigned into different locations, okay? Thank you. Follow-up?
So, of the 66.5 teachers that were reassigned, what I'm hearing from that, if this is correct, that these are teachers that taught a class this year, and now they're gonna be teaching a class that someone else taught last year.
More than likely they're filling a vacancy.
Okay, a vacancy of, did the, did that class of students exist?
It may have based off of, what has got retirement or resignation, or it may exist because we added a class due to the number of students that are projected to be at that particular building because of, the first grade class was larger than the second grade class, but now the first graders are gonna be second graders, and it increases, so we had to add a position. So, fill in the vacancy based on attrition or adds.
So, as these people retired, there were, there were two classes and two teachers, and now somebody retired, so there's one teacher for that same amount of kids?
No.
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 What, what do you mean, Dr. Molinar? When you say two, two teachers in one class?
I can try to, I'm gonna try to explain a little bit, especially about the 40 elementary positions, as this really relates to our annual staffing process. So, what happens annually in the early, you know, January is that projected enrollment is looked at for the full year, for the upcoming year. And so, that necessitates, at, at every building, sometimes adding a grade level at second grade because you have a huge group of first graders moving up into second grade, but then that also might mean that you need one less first-grade teacher because your next incoming group of first graders is not as large. So, that rollercoaster process happens on an annual basis. So, these 40 elementary positions originate from that process. That happens annually. So, some positions were vacancies that teachers were able to be reassigned to, and some of them are newly added classrooms at buildings where there's a projected increased enrollment at any given grade level. Now, the 26.5 secondary positions were more instigated by financial necessity. Those, again, are absorbed by vacant positions, which means that we had 66.5, well, more than that, 'cause we had six extra, classrooms this year that didn't have a full-time licensed teacher of record, and so now they do. So, that's where the impact that you're seeing. Now, I understand it's a little confusing 'cause you're thinking, how am I, how are we reassigning 40 teachers, but we're not increasing our class sizes at the elementary level? That's because our decrease in enrollment. So, because we have a steady decline in enrollment, we're always going to, to be in this position where, as we go through annual staffing, we are, unless our enrollment starts to increase across the district, as we go into our annual staffing process every year, we may be in the very real possibility that we'll be eliminating more positions than are created. That is an annual process and is not related to any overall reduction in force. That's just something that has to occur naturally as part of managing the district.
Thank you. Vice President Jackson.
Follow-up. So, just to, for clarity, the, the 52 positions are going to be covered by 58. So, this question about over class sizes, it becomes a, it's a moot conversation for this specific number.
Correct.
Yes.
Because.
Correct.
The class size is the class size.
Yes.
Whether, because these, the 58 was in central office, not in any classrooms anyway. And so, the 52 are in those current classrooms where those students are at, the, the same number of students, and they're just basically, these are removed and those are going in. Okay, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I was understanding that correctly. And then, it's only a maximum, the maximum that a class size can be is like 1 of 28, is it 1 of 28 or 1 of 24?
Elementary is 24, I think 24, 'cause it varies. It's a little different here for me because I'm, I'm, I know we, we set some kind of parameters around class sizes, so I wanted to make sure that we did not go.
'Cause it has to be a, 'cause it's a cap that we.
Yeah.
Contractually have to adhere to, so I don't think in Akron it can have a 1, I think it's 1 of 28, but.
Yeah. Yeah. But we also had some classrooms, Ms. Aunt Jackson, that didn't have, it might have had maybe 15, 16 kids in a class, and we could have collapsed, but I wasn't, I mean, yeah, looking at it fiduciary, fiduciarily, yeah, but this, when you go in, like, I wouldn't know that I'm going to school and I'm looking at this, and I'm, and I'm asking, hey, you know, I'm noticing the class size is real small at school X, you know, but that's something we look at, and when you do your October 1st count and you come back again and do your, your, your next count in, in the spring, you're looking at student numbers and populations to determine if you have enough teachers, and so, in some cases, you know, if we're looking at the fiscal aspect of it, you can look at a classroom and say, hey, you had 12, you had, you know, 10, that could be to one class of 24 students. But it's not, when you're doing staffing, you have to look at the building, you have to look at the building, you have to look at the program, you have to look at the dynamic, there are many factors that go into when we're gonna be able to give an additional teacher or two to a building.
Yeah, I understand, and then with school closures, you might see an uptick, like, especially in Boris and Mickey Bright and Glover, and that Firestone Park is closing, so, some people may want, I get it, okay, thank you.
So, while I really do appreciate this very important discussion, this item is included under personnel recommendations when we get to that point to vote, so, if there's no objections, I'd like to proceed on in the agenda. A thank you again for the presentation and the information. And so, next on the agenda is item 5.1, and this is approval of the previous meeting minutes. First, is there any additions or corrections to those meeting minutes? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So, move.
Move by Member Sykes, second by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories 6 through 18. Before I do, before the board does vote, I want to read, unfortunately, Ms. Courtney Jones Hunter attended the University of Akron, where she received her Bachelor's of Science degree in education in 1994. During her time as an undergraduate, she was employed by the university's Minority Affairs Department. Her primary duty was to monitor the academic progress of incoming minority freshmen. She returned to the University of Akron and received her Master's of Science degree in counseling in 2001. In 1994, Ms. Jones Hunter was hired by Akron Public Schools. Her first assignment was at Goodyear Middle School, where she taught 7th grade language arts. During her time at Goodyear Middle School, she served as the gifted and talented coordinator and was the leadership team coordinator. She was very student-focused. Former Principal Judy Canovo, Canova wrote in, in her evaluation, Mrs. Jones has an excellent relationship with her students. Students view her as fair, consistent, and effective. She was ready to move to the next step in her professional career. In 2001, she became a counselor at East High School, which is now East CLC. She was able to transition quite well into her new assignment. Former Principal Jana Bruner wrote in her evaluation, you have done an excellent job in stepping right into the role of a counselor. I appreciate the care and concern you have for all students. She found her niche. Years later, former Principal Anthony Lane wrote in her evaluation, you always act in a professional manner with the good of the students in mind. This year marks 30 years that she worked in Akron Public Schools. She was a highly respected member of the staff at East CLC. She had such a positive impact upon students she worked with over the years. Current East CLC counselor Danielle Duda described her in this manner, she was dedicated to the job and made sure that she put in long hours, ensuring that her students were serviced how they should be. She is going to be missed by all. Her love and compassion for the district, and especially the students, will remain as a benchmark for all to strive to meet. Thank you to Ms. Courtney Jones Hunter for touching all of our lives. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. And so, I did misspeak and say the consent agenda, which is in fact the personnel recommendations. And so, Dr. Robinson, personnel recommendations.
He said 6 through 18.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
So, move.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, is there a second?
I second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any further discussion? Madam Vice President.
All right, since I know this is the vote of the hour, but I'm wondering, where is the reassignment language of the central office person that'll be taking, replacing these positions? Should that, if, I didn't see that, that, if they're being reassigned, I've seen in previous agendas where if someone's job, it was being reassigned, that it was noted in the agenda.
So.
In the personnel.
So, before we can start that process, these resolutions have to be done, and then that process begins, and then we bring that to the board to show where these people are moving.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Dr. Molinar?
I will say that I, as a board member, would have appreciated if we had done, and I'm saying this because it sounds like there will be more cuts, gonna be here for four more years, right? If we would have done what other boards do, which is lay out this strategic plan in an executive session, one of the reasons we can go into executive session is to discuss employment, and so, if people are gonna be cut, and then people are gonna be moved in it step by step, so we would know as a board where that process is going, the entire process, instead of individual steps of that process. And, for instance, the.
Dr. Molinar, do you have a question?
You said discussion, this is discussion. And so, in the repositioned items, I would like to know where people are being moved, what clusters are being affected, what programs are being affected. Things like that are important to me, they're important to the community, and they're things that I wish I would have got, had the opportunity to learn before being asked to vote on them.
Is there any other discussion?
Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstain from 18-2 and 18-3.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
I would need your abstain from 14-2, yes on the remainder, 14-2.
Is a no or abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Molinar?
No on 18-1, 18-2, and 18-3, yes on the rest.
Got it. Okay, let's see if I can summarize this correctly. 18-2 and 18-3 pass, they pass 5-1. 18-1 passes 6-1. 14.2 is 6-0 with one abstention, and yes on the remaining balance.
Thank you. Next, we will have approval of resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 22. They are in proper format, and I move for their approval, please.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to remove items 21-2, 22, or 22-1, 22-2, and 20, sorry. Motion to remove items 22-1, 22-3, and 22-4 from the consent agenda, because the questions that I submitted last week were on these items, and we cannot discuss items in the consent agenda. because the questions that I submitted last week were on these items and we cannot discuss items in the consent agenda.
So you'll call a motion for everything with the exception of 22.1, 22.3, 22.4, and then a second motion to approve those and have a discussion.
Is there a motion?
To approve minus those three.
Correct.
Taken out.
Correct.
I move to approve those.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
So we can discuss those.
Second.
Seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion?
No, we can discuss. No.
Seeing none, roll call please.
Again, we're voting for everything except 22.1, 22.3, and 22.4. Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. And the next motion would be 22.1, 22.3, 22.4. And I would recommend doing them singularly.
Is there a motion to approve item 22.1?
I move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar?
Yes, the question that I submitted on May 15th, because once again, I do want to clarify, I'm not trying to cause problems at the meeting. I did try to ask these questions last week. The question I submitted last week is I see a cost in 22-1 of $596.43 for student transportation. So the question I submitted, is that how much it costs to transport students? And if that's the price, is there an option for families that don't qualify for transportation to pay that amount to be transported to buildings?
So for, I'm going to have, I'm going to answer the question and I'll have Deborah Folt answer any follow-up questions if you have any. But this is for families that do not attend our school system, who are eligible for transportation and we do not have assets to provide transportation for them. We're responsible to transport the students and the state allows us to pay the parent a stipend at the end of the year for transporting their own child. This is not something we offer when we can provide the transportation to those that qualify. And the amount is dictated by the state of Ohio.
Thank you, President Autry. Quick question.
Excuse me, Ms. Hall. She had a second question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a response and I appreciate the response, but it did not answer my question. My question is, is that the amount it costs or would cost to transport students? How much, how much does it cost to trans, or rephrase that same question, how much does it cost to transport about per student in our district?
An actual bus runs at $55,000 a year and it is approximately, if full, about $500 per student. Your other question was, can students who are not eligible for transportation, that enroll in APS, can a parent pay for transportation? No, that is against state law. It is not allowed in Ohio. Did I finish? I'm sorry, I have a terrible cold. Please forgive me.
Thank you. So it would be against the law for children who live two miles away or a mile and a half away to get APS transportation?
At this point, we, we, no, no, no. If my son lived one and a half miles away and was rolled in case as an example and is not eligible, I cannot ask Akron Public Schools to let me pay them to do it. It is against the state law in Ohio. Did I complete the question? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion around item 22.1? Seeing none, roll call please. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. 22.3.
The next item is 22.3, resolution from the Akron Community Foundation TK Cyberlink Tennis Fund. Is there a motion?
I move to approve 22.3.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see that this is for four APS schools having tennis teams, Ellett, Firestone, Garfield, and North. I know in our equity meetings, we've been talking about things like this. So I'm happy to see that, you know, there are opportunities for students in various buildings to play tennis beyond the tennis team, et cetera. My question is, how will this appear on the spreadsheet that's being updated for Equity Committee? Is this an LFI fund or how does that look when places like Akron Community Foundation pays for this for us?
Okay, so I'm going to let, I have the answer, but I'm going to allow Ms. Folt to.
In the bottom of your resolution, it tells you Fund 019- I don't know, 23-24. That's the actual grant fund that's been assigned by the Treasurer's Office. When the grant funding arrives, it will be added to the equity sheet that we have been working on and it is not LFI. It will be grant-funded. And then it will support the items as listed by the grant for the schools it's been awarded to. Does that help? Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other? Any discussion? Member Hall?
Thanks, President Autry. Just real quick, if this grant, if it's grant funding, grants have a timeline, right? They're not forever. So will you have to apply for this grant every year? Or is this grant for like five years or is it per year?
It's, it's one year.
Okay.
Doesn't it read that way in the resolution?
Well, when you said grant, it kind of threw me off because. One year. So then how will we sustain, say these schools go to championships? And the next coming year?
All right. First of all, it's very specific as to what they can do. It's to help the camps at summer to see if people are interested in tennis related to these schools. And if I was, say, at a non-tennis school such as Bookdale, I could go to the camps and it supports the actual use of the toe path location, which is a court they get to practice on in non-season times. So to ask, answer your question, your season would include your district championships and other play and that would not be included in the use of these funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other, is there any other discussion around item 22.3? Madam Vice President.
For clarity, this is not a tennis team. This is tennis exposure. Is that correct? It's just exposing them to tennis.
Yes.
So there, it's not creating a team or anything where they would continue to go on.
That's correct.
And so as far as the equity piece, this is for the exposure, but the schools that you're talking about, like Firestone has an actual tennis team. Is that correct?
Yes.
All four schools listed, has an actual tennis team? They have teams that compete?
Yes, they do.
But this doesn't, this grant is not for them to do that.
This is just for a summer program.
But this also was awarded to the schools that had the teams that they wanted to award to, to get the interest to come starting. But if somebody would, if, as an example, if one of the schools had enough students to want to create a team, that's another portion of this. But the grant was specifically for summer efforts and non-season play.
Oh, okay. The grant is specifically for already existing tennis teams to have additional resources. But if, but you said if it's another school that doesn't, is interested, that there's funds and it's $10,000 for that as well? Is that what I just heard you say?
No, what I said, Ms. Jackson, was a student from a non-tennis school is encouraged to go to those camps or go to that non-season play.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So then is it safe to say that this tennis program this summer would be open to any school who doesn't have a tennis team or program?
That is correct.
And will these specific schools be hosting it?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's Ellett, Firestone, Garfield, and North will be hosting the camps this summer, open to any non-tennis school?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0, 22.4.
Thank you. Next is item 22.4, resolution accepting the increase to the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant 23-24. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I see that this is an increase in the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program that we had running. My kids benefited from this. I know they tried new things, new fresh fruits and vegetables. My question that I submitted was, is there a limit to this of when they can be eaten or what we can do in order, how can we maximize student access and introduction to these healthy foods?
Each grant is awarded to each school. So as an example, you've got to say an amount for Resnick, amount for Mason. Those funds can only be used at that location and they can only be served in non-meal times. So therefore, it is not allowed to take these, you know, say we brought in kiwis or something as an example. It has to be served at, not at breakfast and not at lunch. It has to be another time in which they get the exposure. But it does include everybody in the school. So think of it this way, it's a better increase of use and participation because not everybody goes through the meal line. They bring maybe a box or a, you know, a bagged lunch. Thank you for that idea. So yes, the exposure is to everybody in that school and we were very fortunate to get the additional funds this year above what was originally awarded.
Thank you. You have a follow-up?
So to be clear, we have, I know we have guidelines on what needs to be in a lunch and so there needs to be a vegetable in a lunch. So this isn't just an increase in the fresh fruits and vegetables, but if a student is getting a school lunch in this, that means they're getting a full extra serving of.
Of a vegetable at a non-meal time. That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, roll call please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, is that, okay, okay. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is our Business Affairs Recommendations. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of the Affairs Recommendations presented in category 24, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs Recommendations?
I move to approve those.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall, or Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. The questions that I submitted on this item for 24-7 and 24-8 is, are these new initiatives or is this something that's already in place? How different is this than what we had for the 23-24 school year?
Dr. Molnar, this is actually a response to an RFP because our current contracts for nursing services ends on June 30th. So therefore, the first one is for all your school clinics to be awarded to Children's Hospital in the same fashion and service that we received this last year and have for a number of years previously. The second one is for Children's Services, or Akron Children's Hospital, to do the sped required nursing for one-on-one requirements under IEPs. And I will also let you know, although you didn't ask it, if you go to the bottom of the agenda, you will see PSI Associates and that is the third part of that RFP and that is the nursing service of also other services as listed in that particular item that has been awarded for the programs that Mr. Lichty oversees, that are auxiliary services where we are required to do these items for those schools per federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Member Sykes?
Madam Chair, let me, just for clarifications, we've several times heard Dr. Molnar indicate that she has asked that these questions be answered and she has not received an answer. And I would just ask the Business Affairs Director, is this true?
I provided the information to Chief of Staff Carter and I, and she, when she asked me to give them and I provided those answers directly to her. Once they go to Chief of Staff Carter, I appear to understand that they move on up the chain. So I won't know, so now Ms. Carter can respond.
And so I did respond, I took a vacation day on Friday, so everybody know, my sister got married. But I answered, the majority of her questions were answered by Dr. Robinson and I completed some today. I don't know if we sent those yet to all the board members yet, but I did complete those. That's why I have my computer because I'm reading off the answers. And there may be, I think, let me see, one, two, two, that I did not have an opportunity to find, to connect with the people due to my other responsibilities that I was trying to take care of. But I will still type those answers in once I get those. If they can't be answered today by someone here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would just note that I think it's important that when our school board members ask questions of the administration, that we should respond in a reasonable length of time. And if that is not happening, then I would also like to, you know, voice my complaint because even though I may not have asked a question, I expect the board members to receive the same respect that every board member should receive because we are elected officials. We are here to represent individuals and whether there are one question or 20 questions, then those questions should be asked because the people expect us to ask a question. And so I would appreciate if this is happening to Dr. Molnar, that it will, that it should stop and that it should stop immediately.
Board Member Sykes, we do respond to the questions. So when the questions come in, which they're coming in every Monday and sometimes we have multiple questions that follow up to those questions that follow up to those questions. So the questions are getting answered and then when you send another set of questions that are a follow-up to those questions, then we have to send those back out to whomever those are, for whichever departments those need to go to. And then we put those in the, in the, in the notes so that everybody can get it. So we are responding to the questions, but sometimes these questions come with multiple pieces to them which do require the different departments to respond. So we are trying to respond in a timely manner and we send those responses to all board members, whether it, whether you asked it or anybody else asked it, we send it so that all board members get the same information. So no one is getting any different information from someone else. But we are responding to those questions.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, thank you. I appreciate that response. And I would just hope that we will both, first of all, be patient with each other enough and kind, be kind towards each other so that if, if, if a member is not able to receive the information by the meeting, by the time that we're going to see this, if someone would make sure that you just kind of reach out and let that member know that that information has not been received, but you are still working on that. Just as a courtesy, I would appreciate that, not only for, for one particular member, but for all members. If you can't do that, I know that you have all been working very hard. You're all overwhelmed with various items, but it is important that we try and make sure that we give our members the response. the responses to the question, if nothing else, so that we won't have a longer board meeting, which I would appreciate.
Well, we are responding, and those questions, we also put them on the website with the responses so that the public does see those. That's something that I charged Ms. Carter with doing, so that if it's asked in the open meeting, we, sometimes people forget, so we also try to put it on the website as well. But I did state that in the response, that there may be a delay in the questions, given what we were working on, and trying to answer all those questions, which it did take, you know, the team away from some of the stuff that they had to get done. And so, yes, but I did specify that there would be a delay, or there may be a delay is what I said, in responding, but I responded to as many of the questions as I could automatically, probably around 12, 12:30 in the morning.
Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to take this point, since we're on this topic, just to kindly remind board members to allow the administration the time, you know, it's difficult to receive a lot of questions the day of a meeting, or even the Friday before, because I do expect these people to be able to rest and enjoy their weekends. But also, we have to find some balance so that we are not overwhelming them, because they absolutely have a duty to respond to our questions. But we also have a duty to make sure we're not overwhelming them with the important work that they have to do every single day. So I just wanted to say that, just because we do have responses to multiple, you know, voluminous amounts of questions. And so if sometimes they don't all get answered in a timely fashion, again, allow the administration some grace in between all of this work that they're doing. So I just wanted to say that since this topic came up. Thank you. And so I do have a question around item 24.16, which is Midstream Lighting Incorporated Service Agreement for the Lights at Ellett CLC. And I just wanted to share that this is, at this time, not something that I can support. It's no secret that I asked that this item be removed from the agenda because I felt the entire board deserved the full information of the district and its investment in sports facilities over the last several years. And while we did get that information, I am disappointed to see that this request has not been updated, because if we are sincerely committed to, for example, getting the lights at Bookto, then why didn't this proposal come back with a bulk discount? So if we're going to be coming back for lights for Bookto next year, why not get it in a bulk discount now? That's just one thought that I have. And I know also, it was brought to our attention of the timeliness of this, and how everyone shares Ellett's field, well, everyone also shares Bookto's field as well. And now they're not even in a position to be able to raise money through their concessions. And so for that reason, I will not be supporting that item. And so that's just what I wanted to share. Is there any other discussion?
Well, Madam Chair, let me just mention to you that if you would like, if there's nothing that indicates that we have to act on this today, this could just, this can remain on the agenda. We do not have to clear the agenda every week. Items can remain on the agenda without us taking action on that. If, if that's your, if that's what you're saying, that you would like to have more time to get more information on this.
I mean, I have all the information. We've gotten the list of the needs for years. And so I'm speaking as one board member, but absolutely, I think this needs to come back with a research into a bulk discount if we're serious about getting lights at Bookto. We should invest in that now.
Okay. Just as an update, and I shared this with everybody, the reason this item is back on the agenda tonight is for consideration, if it passes tonight, it meets the proposal deadline, which closes on the 6th of June, or the 5th of June. If it does not pass, then the item will go off the agenda completely, and it will have to start a rebid process because the proposal and cost are no longer open as of June 5th. That's why this started the process in April, and we would have to go back out after an 18-month review process. And as we explained at our finance committee presentation, if this was passed and allowed to go forward with purchase orders to the contractor on the 21st, it is a 90-day plan that has to remove the current lighting structure and rebuild the other one. If it goes to start on May 21st, that gets you to June, July, and August, which would meet the start of the new season. We cannot bring it back after the June 5th date because the pricing and proposal given by the contractor expires. I just wanted to make that well-known, and we just wanted to, if it needs to, at your wish, not to move forward, then it will not move forward at all.
Mr. Perry.
On that note, I understand what you're saying, but can we follow up with the same bidder then to get the price for Bookto in the next couple of weeks?
We could. The issue is the current contract that it is under expires itself on June 30th. This is a large national state kind of contract. We could reach out to the vendor, to your question, once we understand, they have to go out and look at exactly what Bookto would need to see if it qualifies for their contract. We were just working on the one that came because we had an existing lighting system that is failing for a complex that is very, very active for everybody, not only in our schools, for a variety of sports, including football, track, soccer, marching bands, JROTC competitions, and community events. And then we were going to go out and start looking, and the priorities at Bookto during the finance committee meeting were air conditioning for the competition gym, which is not there, the press box, as well as the track. Those were the items that were there. That's the press box. Yeah. So those were the items that were presented in finance. But I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. This is the last time that it, this particular proposal with its pricing currently available is before the board for consideration, and if you remove it, and that is perfectly at your pleasure, we will have to start over on the item for Ellett again.
Ms. Hall.
Thank you, President Autry. Just two quick questions. One, are there no lights at Ellett, or there's lights, we're just trying to upgrade those lights to LED?
Currently, 19 of the lights are completely nonusable, and they cannot be fixed. So in the process of trying to do it, it's been determined that the system is failing. So once it truly fails, we will not be able to even turn on the lights that are currently being used. To your point, I cannot find parts or access, and these are original lights to the stadium. They're very, very old, and we've been able to maintain them. It's gotten to the point that we will not only, with the upgrade, maintain them, we have a, we're going to a new service of LED lighting, and the cost and efficiency is much greater to the district with lower cost overall for a number of years in, going forward, should the replacement move with what is on the table.
So these 19 lights burnt out recently, like this year?
Oh, no. We've been trying to maintain these for, as I said, this was an 18-month project that Mr. Boxer and his team were working on, and were able to put out for bid and found a contractor that could meet the requirements for the replacement.
Okay, so though we may not vote on this, RFPs can always be created again.
Again.
And I think that's what...
But to, you are correct. But it may not come in at the same discounted price, and it will not be on the same contract. It could be even a different vendor.
But we don't know that, right?
You will not know that.
And a different vendor could come back at a cheaper cost. Because I mean, I deal with RFPs at work, so...
No, I'll be honest with you, at this point, for the amount of construction costs going up, and the discount we got through the contractor we currently have, I do not know if you'll see that kind of discount in the next state or national contract. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer.
If, if, if this were not passed, and you started the bid process again, would the lights be viable for the start of the football season?
What lights work, Dr. Thompson, will work, and as they fail, they just will not...
Well, I'm saying the new lights would not be in.
Yes, no, that was the point. If we got it approved, it is planned on a 90-day pass project, that it would be in around the middle of August, possibly in time for the first night game, which is scheduled for August the 18th.
If we approve tonight.
If you approve tonight. That is correct.
So the risk here is that if we don't fix these lights, what I hear you saying is, we don't fix these lights, then we haven't, it's, it's possible that we lose our lights at the beginning or sometime during the season, and we would have nowhere to play a night game.
That is correct, and we would have to reschedule.
Because this is the only, I'm sorry.
Yes, correct.
What was your...
Ms. Hall.
I'm sorry, I wasn't recognized. So this is the only school of lights?
Yes, the only stadium light, lighting capacity throughout the district. And that was the original construction when the stadium was made in the 1960s.
Thank you.
But to your other point, Dr. Thompson, the other point, important point of this is currently the funding is available in the FY '24 budget, and so I don't know what will be available going into FY '25, '26, depending on that. So that was the other reason to put it back on the agenda tonight.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two, a couple of questions. So this FY '2 budget?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal, oh, okay. So it's the fiscal year budget from the general fund? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So it's still, it's not like some special budget or for things, it's the general funds? Okay, so if, in fact, it does not go through and it has to restart, then at that point, it can restart with a bulk, and we can address costs for both, okay, multiple schools, like Bookto's lights, and to see if possibly, because it's two things, you can just do it at once, and maybe even break down for this building, this would be the cost for the other building, that would be the cost, just so we can have some perspective. If it did not go through, we can set up bids that way. Is that, is that fair to say, Ms. Volk? And please excuse my bad.
Oh, I do excuse that. Yes, you could. So what you would be doing is looking to replace the existing system at Ellett. And then we would have to get the architects out to do a planning process along with the vendors to establish what would be needed to eat, to make a whole new lighting system added to the Bookto Stadium and the Kenmore Stadium.
Okay, cool. And then, another question, because we talk about community partnerships and relationships, and this is just something to possibly consider, that in the fact, while we're in this transition, if we have to have night games, not sure how many night games are on the schedule, but if possibly we can leverage our relationships with the University of Akron, who has seemed to be a willing partner with this district, just the kindness he's scheduling, if possibly we can have night games there. When I was younger, we used to have games at the Rubber Bowl, and so I don't know if that's something that's beyond the realm of possibilities, but I know Akron has been very generous to partner with us in various areas. Not sure of all the rules or any legalities with that. It just makes practical sense if it's available. We're a city school, they're in our city, that we could do something like that. So just throwing that out there.
Ms. Jackson, I can advise you, we have had to rent the University of Akron Fields for some games. There is a rental fee, and to one of the questions that the ladies asked earlier, any concessions are owned by Akron U. So we have done that in the past.
Yeah, that's not a problem. They can have the concessions, and I'm just wondering, and I'm talking about in-kind services.
Uh, no. There's no in-kind from the University of Akron. We haven't been that successful.
Or a highly discounted, so we'll, I don't know, but, okay. Just throwing, hey, if I would say you have not, because you asked not, but 2411, the subject 2411.
Madam Chair, we're still on this 2411? Is this the same, is this the same?
Oh, okay.
This is a different item that you're bringing up. Are we still on?
We're still in discussion on business affairs.
Right, right.
So that was my discussion point.
So Madam Chair, let me just, just make one more point on the item that we're discussing, that in the future, I would appreciate if we could, when there is a quote that's expiring, if you could make that note, if you could note that, is that on here someplace?
I actually, Ms. Sykes, put it in the Friday notes, I think, three weeks ago, as we were moving forward.
Three weeks ago.
But if I did not make it explicit enough, I'll do better in the next time.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And so I, I can appreciate quotes expiring, and I can appreciate having this funded for this time period now, but I also can appreciate what, what the President, what the President is saying, in that we want to make sure that all schools are being treated as fairly and equally as possible. So I will support this item, but I will support this with the understanding that you, that we will bring the Bookto item to this board as soon as possible. Thank you.
But that's all the business affairs on this?
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Oh, go ahead.
To Ms. Sykes's point, we, we will have the Bookto School looked at, but, I mean, we also have, I think it's the Kenmore School property as well. So again, all of this is a part of the facilities master use plan that we are working on to make sure that as we're laying stuff out for schools, that we're also looking at budgetarily how much these things will cost by year for each location, and making sure that the wealth is being spread over a number of years. But this is unfortunately a situation that, you know, we've come to, and I don't, I just don't want us to wind up, you know, even though I understand, and I do understand the equity piece in it, I just don't want us to end up having to try and rent somewhere for us to have these games and activities because it's used for so much. And it's just unfortunate that when we built these schools, that we did it the way we did it. But all we can do is, is work on that and work on a plan for that to ensure that over time, that each school is going to get touched that has to be touched, because that would be millions of dollars if we just went in and tried to do it all in one school, and we wouldn't be able to do it in one year anyway, or two, or 10.
Is there any other discussion? Ms. Hall.
Thank you, President Autry. Just to piggyback off of Mrs. Sykes, you know, I do want to see equity created within our schools. You know, I understand that Ellett needs their lights, and all the other schools go there too, but we have to get a way of continuing to let certain schools get everything and making them a priority. We got to make sure that there's a balance. And if I don't see a balance going forward, then I refrain from voting on certain things if we continue to vote for certain schools the same thing over and over again, and other schools are being left out. Because just like she stated, can't do band, can't do track, can't do baseball, can't do all that without the lights. You can't do that in other schools either. So all these other schools don't have that same opportunity. So that's all I want to say.
I understand and certainly agree with you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion for business affairs? Madam Vice President.
For another 2411, thank you, Summer. What is this about, can some, can you explain it to me, about the online school, can, like, just for clarity, with Ed Options Academy, college pathways, what is this?
Dr. Kaver, would you like to come up and explain?
Good evening. We use Ed Options in Edmonton for our APS Online School, so it's the actual curriculum that we use. Right now, we have a credit. Last year, we approved this item for more, and so fortunately, the company works with us, and if we have not enrolled a certain number of students in the courses, they have actually awarded us credit in the amount of approximately $500,000 to go towards our purchase for next year. So right now, the budget item is only, is approximately $199,000. I'm not quoting exact numbers, for this school year, but we do want to notate that we are offsetting that cost with the credit from the company. But that is the curriculum we use for APS Online.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Is there any other discussion under Business Affairs? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
We have pulled none of these off the consent agenda, correct?
This is Business Affairs.
Excuse me? Yeah, I understand it's Business Affairs. I'm saying we haven't pulled anything off. Okay, got it, thank you. Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Abstain on 2414, and yes, on the balance.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms., uh, Ms. Autry.
Abstain on 24.7, 24.8, and no on 24.16. Yes, on the rest.
Okay, here we go. On all items minus 24.14, 24.7, and 24.16 are, um, past 7-0. Then 24.1 is 6-0, 24.7 is 6-0 with an extension, and 24.16 is 6 to 1 with 1-0. All 24.8 is an extension. Okay, so that's an extension also. Well, he's underneath the table. You, okay, I'll fix it. I'll make sure it's right. So I, so we're at 24.14 is 6, is 5-0 with 1 extension. 24.7 and 24.8 are 5-0 with 1 extension each. 24.16 is 5-1 with 1-0. Now we're right, okay. For the record, we are correct.
Thank you.
Good luck with that, Ruth.
Thank you. Next is the President's Report. We've had a very long night. I think we heard a lot of information, um, so thank goodness for a short-winded President, but I do just want to reiterate that with all of the discussions, I think I said before, there's just a human factor that we cannot avoid, um, with all of these difficult decisions. And I think the sooner that we can come together and keep children at the center of all of this, the better off we're going to be. I don't think anybody around this table is getting rich. In fact, my life is a lot more challenging, and so I still think about students, and I think about people who supported me in my public education. And so that's what reminds me of why I'm here, and I just want to make sure, um, in this seat, that I encourage everybody else to do the same. I think one of our speakers said about looking in the mirror, because that's where the answer is. And so I just wanted to share that. I always acknowledge our donations. We already talked about the tennis, but our schools receive donations for Project Rise, Jennings Northeast, Ritzman, Elet, we even had a limousine company support our Teacher of the Year banquet, and I just want to thank those folks who continue to support our students. And one last comment that I will leave is something that I heard at a recent workshop I was in, that until adult behavior changes, student outcomes will not. So with that being said, we'll move on to Treasurer's Report.
No report.
Thank you. Committee reports, legal contracts, board policy.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Legal Committee met last Monday, May 13th. We have no policy action tonight. The lovely Heidi has drafted our agenda for the next meeting, which will be June 17th, but, um, if it is not up yet, because it is so far away, uh, it is going to be exactly what we announced in our committee meeting. So on June 17th, we will have six first readings of policies that have come to the Board, um, including a policy on regular meetings to provide, um, time limitations on changes to the agenda, um, another one on board member compensation to ensure our policy does not conflict with the maximum $5,000 that board members can receive per Ohio Revised Code. I, I've seen that there's some rumors out there that we are making more money than that, but there is a maximum $5,000, and I think that's even...
Per year.
Before taxes.
Per year, Renee, say that. Not per meeting.
So that policy will be in for a first reading. And then also, there's a social media policy for a first reading. It is not a Niola policy, it's a new policy to the district proposed by the administration to address employee use of social media, both as employees while promoting district initiatives and activities, and also to provide policy guidelines of the use of social media outside of work during non-employee time. And so ways, um, people, things people should not do online, even during their personal time. Also, first reading on policies related to legislative emergencies, committees, and field trips. So, um, Member Sykes, if you have any other updates to add to that, but that's what's happening in Legal.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Legal Policy Committee? Thank you, Committee. Next is Finance and Capital Management. Mr. Perry.
In the interest of time, I'll be as brief as I can. We did meet last Monday, it was a very well-attended meeting, uh, several people that were here that spoke actually at that meeting. Obviously, this time, we're really focused a lot on our financing and restructuring here at our, uh, school district, uh, and the levy, obviously, a lot of talk around that. Our next meeting is going to be June 17th at 4:30. Um, I would encourage people to continue to come out to the meetings like that and to, you know, be, be heard when we have these discussions, especially regarding our finances. I don't know if you want to add anything, Ms. Sykes?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Next, Instructional Policy and Student Achievement. Madam Vice President.
We have nothing to report. Our next meeting is June 3rd at 4:30.
Thank you. Equity Committee.
Thank you, President Autry. Um, nothing to report. Our next meeting, June 3rd at 5:30.
Thank you so much. Madam Vice President.
Because we did already report off from our April 29th meeting, right? Instructional Policy.
Yes.
About the, great, okay, excellent.
Thank you. And so there, uh, appears to be no unfinished business. Item 30, new business. These items are the same thing. One is the explanation, and one is the actual resolution for use of urgent necessity renovations and upgrades to the Robinson CLC Building for the installation of the NIFSTEM High School at Robinson CLC for the 2024-25 school year. And so we will entertain a motion to accept this resolution.
Make a motion.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Vice President Jackson. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the 10th out of 10 questions that I submitted for the week as related to this agenda. So the resolution states, Ohio Revised Code section is very specific as the contract bidding requirements when the Board of Education of any school district determines to build, repair, and large. My question was, is the resolution of urgent necessity, because we've been unable to fulfill the requirements of 3313.46, and if that is the case, um, which part, which requirements have been met, and which parts are we unable to meet causing this resolution of necessity?
We have met all parts of the actual statute except the bidding timeframe. The statute says, because it's over $50,000, you must do a 30-day bid. By using urgent necessity, you are allowed to shorten that window to a 10-day bid, which was, I put in your Friday notes, so we released the bid on May 2nd, after our architects had put the plans together on May 9th, which was a Wednesday. Mr. Keenan, who is now your new Director of Facilities, and Brandy Frye, who is from Hassan Staub, who are the architects, were available for any contractor that wanted to walk the building. We had one contractor actually show up and walk the building and interview them, and we opened the bid on Thursday, the 16th, at 2:30, and we received one bid from the one contractor who's well-known in the area. We are very pleased to have Kavanaugh be one of, we've worked with them before, and the subcontractors that they are going to use on their listing meet all our other requirements. So by allowing us to do this and approving it tonight, and the budget is available, this allows us to start releasing the purchase order to Kavanaugh tomorrow, and this allows them eight weeks to get this project done because we are expecting the staff and students to report to the building on the 29th of July. Any delay, we will not be able to meet the plumbing, electrical, and permitting requirements. If you have any questions of your architects, I have Ms. Frye in the office, uh, in the audience to answer, if that would be helpful. It is the timeframe on which you're allowed to bid, but we met all the other statutes. Was that helpful? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion around this item? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Uh, sorry, I keep saying Mr. Alexander, sorry. Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you so much. There is not a need to recess into executive session, so at this time, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hall.
Second.
Second by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. We're adjourned at 9:53.